I thought we were going to have a couple more commissioners, maybe they're on their way, but we've got a quorum, so we'll start. Thank you for coming to the October 13th meeting of the Placer County Planning Commission. Would you please join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Kathy, roll call.
Mr. Akkuri?
Here.
Mr. Severson's absent, Mr. Gray is not here, Mr. Moss is absent, Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Nader?
Here.
Mr. Rakuchi?
Here. Next item is report from the planning director, EJ Uvaldi. What do you have for us this morning? Something important?
Just, just a couple of things. Good morning Chairman, members of the commission, EJ Uvaldi with the Planning Services Division. Two, two things, we had a board meeting on Tuesday at the Board of Supervisors. The board considered a continuance of the Marsh Valley West parcel specific plan project. What the board did was take final action on its September 13th tentative approval of the project. And so that project is approved. One change they did make was to the workforce housing. The applicant came forward and is now proposing to construct housing for 47 FTEs and then the remaining five units would be in Lufy. So as you remember, originally it was either construct onsite or pay in Lufy. What they're proposing to do now is to actually construct enough housing for 47 FTEs up, up front as part of the project. So that was approved by the board. The other project was a Granite Bay project that was considered, the Park at Granite Bay. Meeting was well attended, lots of concerns brought up about the, about the neighborhood, the island area, about traffic density, you know, the land use compatibility. At the end, after deliberation, the board did approve that project. It was a four to one vote. Supervisor Montgomery voted no on that item specifically due to the fact that it was a gated project. So that, that's what happened at the board this week for planning commissions that are upcoming. As you know, in two weeks, we're going to be going back up to Tahoe on October 27th. We're having a draft EIR hearing on the Palisades project. That's a 63 single-family dwelling project and also half-plex units. Then we're also hearing the Pumpjack, a draft EIR hearing on that project. That's the redevelopment of the Pumpjack Squaw Valley Inn. And then I believe there's also a subdivision modification on that, and I think that is everything for that meeting. So weather permitting, I'll keep my fingers crossed, that's where we'll be heading. November 10th, we would be back in Auburn. Right now, I'm not sure if or what will be on that agenda, so we'll keep you posted on whether or not we'll have that meeting. We are planning a special planning commission meeting up in Tahoe on November 17th, and that's to consider the Tahoe Basin Area Plan and the Tahoe City Lodge project. There might also be a couple of other projects on that same agenda. Hopefully that will be our last trip to Tahoe this year. And then the final meeting of the year would be December 8th, and right now, a little too far out to determine what's going to be on that meeting. So with that, that concludes what I have to report to you this morning. If there's any questions?
Any questions for EJ?
All right, thank you.
None?
None.
Okay, good. Okay, next item on the agenda is the public comment. This is a time set aside at every public meeting for the public to bring up any item that's not on today's agenda. Is there anyone on the, in the public wishing to address? Here, we got one. Your name for the record, please?
Morning, my name is Jim Cook. I live in the Tree Lake neighborhood in Granite Bay.
Okay.
I'd like to speak to the commission about a extension of a storage facility, a commercial development in a residentially zoned district. Supposedly, it's been supported based on a cup that was done in 1987, that there's a claim that there's a vested right based on that cup. From all the research, we've been able to do a vested right, according to the Placer County Code, could not be extended beyond twice the original grant, which was five years. So we're well outside that window. So as we see it now, there's a couple violations of zoning in the Placer County Code. One is that under the use tables back in 1987, a storage facility was specifically prohibited in a residentially zoned district, and we've asked for documentation. It's been 14 days now, and we have not received anything from the planning department, so we're getting a little bit frustrated that construction continues while we don't have the information at hand to actually fight our case. So we'd ask for some support in expediting that request for documentation. Let's assume the cup is determined to be valid. The cup was very specific in that the storage facility is only for boats and RVs. There's five by five, 10 by 10 units, there's gardening organizations running their businesses out of this storage facility, running through a residential neighborhood. That's a violation of the cup if it is indeed determined to be valid. That's the second violation. The third is it's a waste disposal site, so there's a tree service on the property, actually shredding trees and making piles of wood. We've already had a fire out there right behind a bunch of residences, so we're concerned for safety reasons. Another violation, and the other violation we've got is it's being used for storage of hazardous materials. So we've got gardeners there that are storing poisons, they're storing fuel in fairly large amounts, which is illegal according to the Placer County Code for this particular storage facility in this zoning. So the actions that we're looking for here is a nuisance abatement, so that this be declared a nuisance because of the violations of the Placer County Code, and that we begin nuisance abatement procedures immediately. The other request that we'd have is the document expediting, and then we'd also like for Mr. Moss to recuse himself from this commission on anything that his family tends to economically benefit from, whether that's the KH Moss Company, whether it's relatives directly. I think there's a clear conflict of interest to be making decisions about planning when you stand to economically benefit from that. And I'd also call out that I represent 50 home households in this neighborhood. We've all signed a petition, we're continuing to gather other signatures. So I'd appreciate if we could maybe get on a formal agenda at a future meeting, so we can discuss this at the appropriate level of detail.
Okay, thank you for, as you know, we can't make any decisions here on items that aren't on the agenda, but I would like to make sure that, that staff has your letters or that they didn't get lost somewhere along the county, or if they're working on it. EJ, you have?
Yeah, so, thank you Chairman. So staff is well aware of the concerns that Mr. Cook has brought forward. We do have a public records request in right now, I'm going to have Karen to speak to that just in a minute here. In addition to that, we also have formal complaints that have been filed with the county regarding the activity out there. We're turning those over to code enforcement, so we'll be going through that administrative process. You know, any nuisance abatement or whatever comes out of that, it would go through that process before anything would come to your commission. So with that, I'll have Karen talk about the public records request.
With respect to the Public Records Act request, it arrived on the 30th of September after hours. Under the Public Records Act, the requirement to respond is 10 days after receipt of that PRA. Therefore, the, the PRA was actually received on Monday the 3rd, which means the response is due today, and it's my understanding, a response will be forthcoming.
Okay, thank you.
If I could make one more point, our concern is that construction continues, and if they get to a certain point, this construction becomes irreversible, and that's a great concern of us in terms of time.
I would, I would refer you to get with our, the staff, and you know, they have the latest on that, and they can advise you more than I could, for sure.
All right, appreciate your time, thank you.
Anyone else on the public comment for items not on today's agenda? I'd like to have the record show that Jeffrey Moss has arrived, arrived actually five minutes ago, so whatever. Thank you. Your name?
Good morning, gentlemen, my name's Rich Strausser. I live over in the Atwood Ranch Development Area, and more of a purpose of formality, not attending one of your meetings previously, when you have open comment and there is an agenda item that I would like to address, and it's the emergency shelter, however, I don't know, is there public comment during that period?
There will be, there will be. We have, any item that's on the agenda after staff has made their comments, the staff, commission members ask staff questions, and we open it up to the public.
Okay, thank you. All my comments until that time.
Thank you for clarifying that, so I didn't have to tell you to sit down. Thank you, yeah, you'll have plenty of time to comment on that after staff presentation on that item. Anyone else in the audience? If not, I'll close public hearing on that. Consent agenda, we have one item on the consent today, and that's approval of the action agenda or minutes of the September 22nd meeting. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
They moved in second, a roll call?
Mr. Akkuri?
Yes.
Mr. Severson's absent, Mr. Gray is absent, Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Yes, okay, our first timed item then is the Ovation Senior Living Facility, and George Roscoe will handle the staff presentation at the present time. It's all yours, George.
Going too fast.
If you want, if you want.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Good.
George Roscoe, Placer County Planning, as always, it's nice to be before you today. So, let me... So, this morning before you is the Ovation Senior Living Facility. It is classified as a residential care home in the Placer County zoning ordinance. It would be 108,000 square feet. It will have 114 residential units, with the breakdown being 85 assisted, 29 memory care. The total amount of residents would be 122 with 85 employees. This slide is just to give you an idea of where it is. As you go down, if you start at the intersection of Douglas and Sierra College, and you go towards Sacramento County line, it's about 1.4 miles, give or take a little bit. The main road that cuts across there is Old Auburn Road, and it's slightly south of that and on the eastern portion. The requested entitlements for the project are a rezoning, to rezone the site from RS, residential single-family combining ag with a minimum building size of 40,000 square feet, to residential ag with a minimum building size of 40,000 square feet. The reason for that is residential ag allows residential care homes of seven people or more. There's also a request for a tentative map to subdivide the property into a 4.5 acre piece, which will be along the front, along Sierra College, and a 2.4 acre piece in the back, which will abut the residential subdivision in the city of Roseville. The piece in back at this time is not slated for development. It may be developed later, it may never be developed, but other than it being subdivided off, that's the only part that it plays in this project at this time. This is just to show you what the entire site looks like, and will be rezoned.
So George?
Yes.
The rezone will apply to the entire parcel?
At this point, that is the proposal, yes.
Later, or is it split? Rezone and then split, right?
It, it's three entitlements all at once. It'll be a rezoning, that's one entitlement, then the subdivision to subdivide it from 4.5, excuse me, the 6.9 into a 4.5 and a 2.4, so that's part of this entire package, and then a minor use permit to allow for the residential care home. So it's all one piece. And yes, at this point, the proposal is for the piece in back to be zoned to residential ag with a minimum building size of 40,000 square feet.
Thank you.
This is just to give you a sense of actual project. It's 108,000 square feet, it's two stories. The main recreation area for the residents will be in the interior courtyard. There is more than ample parking, they've actually overparked it. It has through circulation all the way around. It will be accessed off the front of the, along Sierra College Boulevard. It will be buffered very well around the perimeter of the project. That will be fine tuned during the development review committee's review of the project. Also, there'll be landscaping against a building to break it up. The building, and it's hard to see from here, I'm sorry, I apologize, I didn't have a slide, so I'm going to turn this around for you.
Do you want just put it over on the other end over there, and the, and the public can see it, and we can kind of view it from here, too? That's fine, that'll, I think it'll...
So essentially, this is, anyone who's interacted with this?
Well, you can...
These are elevations, it's a craftsman style building. It is two stories, it does have to meet the, excuse me, it does have to meet the height limit of 36 feet, just like any other residential structure would in this, in this setback, in this zone district, I'm sorry. It will have brick. Community plan for Granite Bay calls for a craftsman style look, this should fit right in. So, with regard to that, we prepared a mitigated negative declaration. The negative declaration found that all impacts were reduced to a less insignificant level. There has been really, I would say in my mind, three significant issues that have come up. One is because this is a residential care home, will it impact emergency services? At this time, South Placer Fire was involved in the mitigated negative declaration, they commented three different times. The last comment that we had was that they were satisfied with the project as proposed, never mentioned that there would be any issue with them serving the project. My understanding is, from the applicant, that they have a model where they don't call emergency services a lot of the time, because they have staff on, onsite that can help people get up that have fallen down, whereas other facilities just immediately call emergency services. So, they have put in their project description that they actually contact emergency services substantially less than other care homes. The other issue that's come up is traffic. There was a traffic study prepared for the project, they did analyze four intersections along Sierra College Boulevard and the entryway at the project. It was determined to be, determined to be less insignificant with regard to impacts created by this. They do have to pay mitigation fees into the traffic fund. I would say the biggest issue that's come up, and it's the exact same issue that came up with the project that I had before you last month, that was just EJ referred to at the board the other day, the Park at Granite Bay, which is right up the street and on the other side of the road from this, and that has to do with neighborhood compatibility and consistency with the Granite Bay community plan. The issues are exactly the same, and the arguments are exactly the same as with the park. This is a large facility, it has, it's pretty dense, 122 residents, although it's a little bit different than an apartment complex, because the majority of these people won't drive. They don't make a lot of noise. There's a lot of different land use issues associated with this. But the bottom line with units like this, in what we call the island area, because it's surrounded by three sides, by Roseville and Sacramento County to the south, is that you have infrastructure. You border on Sierra College Boulevard, which has the potential to handle much more traffic than it handles now. You have water, you have sewer, and you have a space that's big enough that you can adequately buffer from adjoining properties. So with that, we are, excuse me, asking that you recommend to the board that you adopt the mitigated negative declaration, adopt an ordinance to rezone the assessors parcel, 4660305O, approve the tentative map, and approve the minor use permit for the residential care home. That concludes my staff report, unless you have any questions for me.
I've got a question. Yeah, I'd like to ask George just one question, if I, if I may. This only has one entrance and exit.
It does.
You said the fire district was happy with it, but did the emergency, another exit, maybe at the other part of the property, still on Sierra College, ever discussed?
It did not come up, and, and I think one of, maybe one of the reasons for that is that it has a fully looped around access, you can circulate around the entire building. Their comments don't seem to suggest that this needs a secondary access anywhere. I don't know if the fire department is here or not, but if they had needed one, it certainly would have come up during the environmental review process.
Okay, thank you, George.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Dwayne?
A couple of questions. On, could you go back to where you kind of got the layout of it?
Oh, sorry. This one?
Yeah, well, that's, that's good enough. From where the entrance is, where, how far, do you know how far it is to other intersections? I mean, the distance, would you guess?
I, I don't, but I could ask Sarah Gilmore from Engineering and Servant, she may be able to figure that out.
Give me just a moment.
Okay, well, while she's looking, I've got another question on the, let's see, the topography.
Yes.
I didn't get a chance to drive by this, but as I understand, that there's quite a bit of topography change in there, and that this actually, somebody, I was told that it sits lower than some of the rest of it.
It does, it does, I, I went there yesterday.
So, I guess I'm just trying to understand that, you know, because part of this is a kind of a visual impact. So if it's sitting lower, would, it would tend to have less of an impact, I would guess, if the topography is lower.
Yeah, the topography is, is slightly lower.
By how much, any guess?
I, I don't know, from the adjoining properties. I do know that there's a distance of about 26 from one end to the other, 26 feet of fall. So, you know, it will be lower than the other pieces. I'm going to tell you, I think when you do improvement plans for the site, that some of that's going to get leveled out, and it's not going to remain that low.
Right.
It'll balance the, the dirt onsite, so it'll probably be somewhere about half of what it is now. But I think the important thing to realize is, this will be the same height as houses could be, it can't be any bigger. It is a large structure. However, it's, it's, it's square in nature, because you don't want to spread it out too far, because older people have a hard time walking. And there will be a lot of landscaping, and you can see that there's a large buffer just right next to the building, which will really break it up, as far as long, long walls and that sort of thing that you would see on something like this. Well, there'll be trees and that sort of thing, so it'll break it up. So I think it will be slightly lower, but probably not anywhere near as low as the site would be now.
But even if it's, you know, 12 feet less than the rest of the topography around it, that helps to some degree.
Yeah, to some degree, I'm, yeah, okay.
Go ahead, Richard.
Okay, I guess maybe I'm displaying my naivety. You see, there's fees that apply, and I think for the cumulative effects of traffic, traffic mitigation fees are being required, and these are for the Granite Bay ordinances, I mean, for the Granite Bay area. But it titles a county-wide traffic limitation zone. What does that mean?
It's a bad day for Sarah. I'm going to refer you to Sarah.
I'm sorry, I was measuring, could you...
Yeah, I did get an answer to my question.
I have an answer to your question.
Now, you have a county-wide traffic limitation zone, and that's a fee that's being applied to the project?
That's the traffic impact fee.
And that applies to Granite Bay, or it says county-wide on it? That's what's confusing.
County-wide is one portion of the fee, every area, and Stephanie can really get into the details from DPW is here, but the, the zones are the Granite Bay Zone, the Auburn Zone, you know, the Tahoe Zone. Some of them are only divided up among the, the county-wide fee, you know, the county-wide CIP, but there's also improvements identified just for Granite Bay, so only the Granite Bay fee includes that. I'm sorry, I'm kind of messing that one up. Stephanie will, Stephanie will fix this.
I, I think maybe the confusion is that the traffic limitation language, that's our, kind of our old fee program language, you probably haven't seen that before, but essentially what that is, is the Granite Bay Capital Improvement Program fee.
So, so the fees that are collected are going to be spent in the Granite Bay area?
In Granite Bay, yeah, we have a list of improvements that are in our capital improvement program for Granite Bay. That's what that fee will go to.
Okay, thank you.
And to answer Mr. Nader's question, it's about 500 feet, a little bit more, between 500 and 1,000 feet, to the intersection to the north.
There's one to the north, right?
You asked to the nearest intersection, so up to Old Auburn and Sierra College.
Oh, that's the closest intersection?
That's the closest intersection.
Okay, because there, isn't there a development to the north, where there's another drive off of Sierra College?
No.
I may not have my bearings correct.
No, just to the north, there's a bike lane.
Could you go back to the kind of broader kind of area?
Wrong way again, I apologize.
Yeah. Rockwood Court, isn't that, that's an intersection, isn't it, on Sierra College?
I guess so, it's, it's a small cul-de-sac, it's not a through road. The, the nearest that was in the traffic study is the Old Auburn, Sierra College Boulevard intersection.
So, you're saying that up to Old Auburn's about 500 feet?
A little more, 600, 700, something like that.
I think, I think the report said this, this project was about 1,000 feet south of that intersection.
That's very approximate, I was going from the north corner. It's got about 350 feet of frontage, so we can both be right.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, thank you.
I'm just quoting the report, I don't know, I didn't go out there and measure it, I did go out there, but I didn't measure it. Any other questions for George at the present time?
The applicant currently doesn't have a use for the second parcel?
Does not. My understanding from the applicant is that it may be developed later, it could be residential. They don't, they, it just, other than subdividing it off, because Ovation is interested in the front portion and not the back, they do not have a use for it as much.
So this, this rezoning will, will still allow for that to be homes?
Yes.
You don't have to come back again and change that?
No. Residential agricultural and residential single-family are, are very similar. Residential single-family combining ag is very similar to residential agriculture, except residential agricultural would allow more intensive agricultural uses than residential single-family would.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
The back parcel that will be created, is there a separate access for that, or will that have to be accessed through the facility?
No, at this point, my understanding is that the project has been designed, if you look at the main entryway and you look at, at the, it goes straight through to the back. So if it were to be developed at this time, it would, it would potentially have to go through the project.
Okay, any further questions of George? This time, okay. If not, we'll ask the applicant's representative to step forward, which he has, and make his presentation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Marcus Laduka, 3200 Douglas Boulevard in Roseville. On behalf of Ovation Senior Living, I'm pleased to be before you today with a recommendation for approval from your staff. On Ovation Senior Living's proposed, is assisted living and memory care facility on Douglas Boulevard, again, about 1,000 feet south of the Old Auburn Boulevard intersection. Staff has made, covered most of the details on the actual mix of units and that kind of thing. I did want to mention that the assisted living units are a mix of both studio and one-bedroom units, there are eight units that'll be two-bedroom. The assisted living ranges in size from 500 to 1,200 square feet. The memory care units, the 29 memory care units are a mix of mostly studio with several companion units. Those range in size from 400 to 550 square feet. The facility will employ 85 employ, roughly 85 employees to staff over a 24-hour period, so they're not all there at any, any one time. The shift changes are designed at off-peak periods, so at 6:00 AM, 2:00 PM, and 10:00 PM. So it's to avoid peak traffic times in the general area, so it's to reduce those impacts. So really, in terms of peak hour traffic, the impacts are nonexistent. To give you an idea, there's 18 trips in the morning peak hour, and only 11 of those are inbound, and 27 trips in the afternoon peak hour, so trying to avoid periods, let's say before school, during the morning rush hour, after school, and then also in the afternoon rush hour, to try to avoid those, those, those time periods. The exterior materials, as staff mentioned, include a combination of stone, as you can see, stone, stucco, and wood. After we received several community comments, there are additional stones been added to the exterior of the building, and the illustrations before you show what the building will look like, as opposed to being on the slide, along with a lowering of the wood of the exterior, and also greater insulation of the exterior facade in the front of the parcel. Both the exterior and interior of the facility are designed to be residential in nature, providing the senior residents a environment of being at home with, while at the same time having their needs met by staff at the facility. Building height's 36 feet, staff mentioned, it's two stories, just what is already allowed in the zone. One of the issues that's come up is regarding light and glare, and what that impact might be on adjacent properties. So if you look in your NAG deck, there's five mitigation measures that I'd like to call out. First... First is that light poles cannot exceed 14 feet in height. Must be a color, black, bronze, or dark bronze, it will blend into the landscape, and lights must have a full cutoff design, so the light source is fully screened. Second, there is no wall pack or non-cutoff lighting that will be allowed. Third, building lighting will be shielded and projected downward so that light bulbs are not visible, and the light fixtures themselves have to blend in with the exterior colors and materials of the building. Fourth is the lighting intensity, because sometimes you can be shining down, but if the lighting intensity is too much, it still produces glare. So lighting intensity must be a level that only highlights the adjacent building area and the ground area. Cannot highlight on any pedestrian or vehicle traffic way, so you don't have light that's bleeding into the parking area or the drive aisle. And finally, landscape lighting can only be of a level of intensity sufficient to highlight shrubs and trees, and again, no glare on any pedestrian or vehicle traffic. So the idea is to have very low-scale lighting on the site. As you can see from the site plan, the facility is designed with landscaping around the building. The illustrations we submitted to you today give you a better idea what that would look like in terms of trying to create that buffer. The outdoor recreation courtyard is for enjoyment of both visitors and residents alike. As staff mentioned, the circular drive aisle provides full access. We at one point talked about having a second access when we first talked to the fire department. They didn't want it, in terms of it was getting closer at the far north end of the facility. They thought this was adequate, just as staff mentioned, because it has a circular drive. And so the idea was just to have the one. So we addressed what their concerns are and what their request was. Parking, as staff mentioned, we actually overparked the site. There are 75 total spaces, 61 are required. Frontage improvements, curb better sidewalk, landscaping, a sound wall, plus extra pavement at the entrance for, along the western edge, to provide space for a third northbound lane on Sierra College Boulevard in the future. There is no parking next to adjacent homes. That's always an issue, people coming in and showing their headlights, that kind of thing. So as you can see, particularly with the, at the southern boundary there, there are no spaces there. The only spaces adjacent to another parcel are on our eastern end of this parcel, but that is adjacent to our 2.4 acre parcel to the rear. So there is no other parking to avoid that issue of glare into people's yards. Another issue that's come up relative to deliveries, all deliveries are through the front of the building, except for a once-a-week food delivery truck. That offloads its goods to the facility on the north side where the kitchen is. That north side is not adjacent to any homes, it's adjacent to an open space parcel owned by the city of Roseville. Garbage pickup is in that same area. So there aren't garbage trucks next to the homes to the south, for example, or any type of deliveries. All other deliveries are to the front. Now, we know, as staff mentioned, a big issue for folks has been emergency response and the impact on emergency response services from senior care facilities. Different facilities take a different approach. There are some facilities that call 911 on every single matter. My mom was in a memory care facility before she passed off Eureka Road, and that was their model. Anything at any time, it was a call 911. Every single, didn't matter what it was, they called 911. That's not the case with Ovation. Staff at the facility includes professional care staff, licensed nurses, and medical technicians. The project's onsite wellness center provides healthcare-related services and also coordinates doctor home visits at the facility. The Ovation medical staff will rely on the professional opinion of its staff to make the determination of whether treatment can occur onsite or whether there is an actual emergency. So for example, if someone twists their ankle but is still, has some mobility, they make the determination of whether it's an emergency or whether it's a non-emergency, in which case they would call a company like AMR that has non-emergency transports that can take them to their doctor. So again, that's the difference here. The one question came up to the fire district, and we have submitted a letter to you that we had submitted to staff, and I didn't see it in your packet. At the May 4 meeting of the Granite Bay MAC, the fire district was there, addressed the issue about calls for emergency services from senior care facilities, and you can read the minutes there from the MAC meeting. They didn't see that as an issue, as a significant impact on them at all. In fact, they said they can, you know, even take several more and it wouldn't have an impact on their providing emergency care elsewhere in the community. Frankly, they said the bigger issue for them is Folsom Lake, in terms of calls for service. That's the, that's the big hit on there, is call for service, particularly in the summer. In terms of location of the project, as staff mentioned, the issues here are very similar to other, another project further to the north. The project sits on Sierra College Boulevard, as you well know, with Hazel Avenue. It's the Beltway. It's the major regional arterial connector between Highway 50 and Interstate 80. This location is also a short ride from the Kaiser and Sutter, Roseville Medical Center campuses, which are each over a million square feet, also close to medical offices on Kirby Way, as well as, you know, restaurants, personal care services in the area. And again, if residents want to go to those, we have a van. It takes people on appointments, so that people aren't driving, and we provide transportation to those. As staff mentioned, the county has issued a mitigated negative declaration for the project. After that analysis done, including a traffic study and a noise study and all the other studies that go with that, found no significant effects in anything, whether there's impact on services, impact on facilities, impact on traffic. Now, you may hear in the public hearing today that there's no demand for this facility, the marketplace is saturated and we don't need it anymore. Now, besides the fact that the marketplace and our economy determines when a service is in demand, and no one makes an investment of close to $25 million without having done very detailed and very extensive market research before they're going to plunk down that kind of investment in a community. And really, that issue is not germane on a hearing on land use entitlements. The fact of the matter remains that there were very few of these facilities built in Granite Bay or in the surrounding area for decades. The population is aging in both Granite Bay and adjacent areas, and really, for much of Northern California, you have that, where you didn't have any of these facilities built for a long, long time. You're starting to see more of them get built because, well, we're all aging. Much as I hate to admit that, we all are. And part of the issue is not just residents that might need to go into one of these facilities, but also for families. I mean, we even had an example brought up by one of the MAC members, that he wanted to put his dad in the facility. There is no vacancy. Basically, for all intents and purposes, you're at 100% vacancy, 100% occupancy at the facilities in and around Granite Bay. There's a waiting list for them. He had to take his dad to Folsom, to a facility there. And that's what you're finding, is the facilities were not built for so many years, the population grew greatly and aged, and now these, some of these facilities are being built, but there is a tremendous demand for those. The other aspect of this is, again, trying to locate this rather than putting it in the heart of the community, putting it on a major thoroughfare nearby, other medical facilities that are there and services. And actually, if, looking at this type of facility and the issue about adjacency, particularly with the home to the south of us, that issue of, you know, is that appropriate to have that type of facility next to those type of homes? Well, you've already approved one. Escaton, just south of Douglas on Barton Road, is adjacent to homes that are in the $2 million range, and we just printed up some photographs, so you can see how close, in fact, that Escaton shares a driveway with those homes. So again, it has not been an issue, it has not detracted from those homes, and again, it doesn't have the type of, it's much closer relative to those homes than ours will be. The other thing I'd like to make a comment is, you're going to hear comments that were surrounded on all four sides by residential. If you could pull up, look at the aerial shot of this, when you look at the area. To the west, we have Sierra College Boulevard, will potentially be a six-lane roadway. To the north is not residential, it's open space owned by the city of Roseville. To the west of this facility is the 2.4 acre parcel. It is not adjacent to homes. We are adjacent to homes in the south, and our idea there is trying to work with our neighbor to create a green buffer. As you can see from the drawings, the illustrations we submitted to you there, the idea is to have an extensive landscape buffer for the one side of our property there that has homes adjacent to it. In terms of the topography, there's actually a, from the back of the, far eastern end of the parcel to the far western end, it's a 30-foot difference. Relative to those homes to the south, it's probably, we're probably about seven, we will be approximately seven to eight feet lower. Depends on where the parcel line, where the development is on the south side, but we're about seven to eight feet lower. So, we're actually depressed down as opposed to being up. Now, yesterday, I received a series of letters from staff that had been submitted in the last couple of days, with several expressing concerns about the change in zoning to the rear parcel that we are creating. To address those comments straight on, we were on the phone up until late last night walking through this, and so our desire today is that we will be modifying what is before you for action today, and that is to no longer propose a rezone of that 2.4 acre parcel to the south. It'll stay residential, single-family, as people have right now, next to them, to the east in East Ridge. And so the idea will be to keep that one at residential, single-family, so there will be no change there. We're still doing the parcel map to create that parcel, but it will stay residential, single-family. There was another comment talking about, on the, what would be the western parcel, the frontage parcel, say that that zoning would be conditional. Conditional zoning is not allowed under California law. It simply is not allowed. You cannot have conditional zoning. Either zone it or you don't. But again, we're looking to proceed forward in the spring to make this a spring 2017 project on the front parcel, but leave that back parcel as folks have requested and expressed concerned about at residential, single-family. With that, we're available to answer any questions that the commission might have for us. We would ask that at the conclusion of the public hearing, we given the opportunity to address any issues that are, that were raised regarding the analysis and regarding the project. After that, we would ask that, after you deliberate on the project, that you approve the project as recommended and conditioned by your staff and as we have modified today. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Question. Marcus, there's a condition 53 that talks about CCNRs and a property owners' association. And so, I don't know, it implies that there'll be several owners of this, or what's that really all about?
Well, because we're creating separate parcels, that's a standard condition requested by, that is conditioned on projects, because if, let's say, my folks, for example, those are single-family homes built back there. My clients aren't single-family home builders, so they would probably sell it to a home builder to build a couple homes there. That being the case, they would have to have CCNRs to provide for common access, to make sure that this property owner of the Ovation project does not restrict access, have utilities extended to them, and does not, you know, have a spite strip at the back, in which case it's like you can't get the utilities. So that's why you would need CCNRs or property owners' association to address those kind of issues. And those have to go through your county council's office to get reviewed, along with planning and engineering, surveying, division staff, to make sure that the conditions that reflect what needs to be done for that back parcel are also addressed in those CCNRs. But it's a standard condition.
So that would be a future?
Well, proceeding forward, when we come forward with this to get improvement plans, you have to have those CCNRs done and in place. So that is not something that we wait till later on. It's like, you know, you don't get your improvement plans approved without having the CCNRs signed off, prepared and signed off, to be able to provide for those issues like common access and that kind of thing.
So, will that mean that you'll have to make a decision on the back parcel then?
No, you're just providing access to, things like access and utilities, you're just providing access to utilities to it. We won't have to make a decision because we're not building it, but it's going to be recorded against the entire seven acres. So therefore, a person buying that, let's say to build a couple homes, let's say that's what they end up doing, to build a couple homes on that, they know that when they walk in, there's a recorded document on title that says they have access through this one and they have utilities that are also extended.
Okay. And then if that parcel does develop with, I guess, more than a couple of homes, then is that going to change the perspective of the fire department in terms of?
No, again, they, I mean, they looked at it as, with the zone change. And so, again, we at one point offered to, they didn't want the second access. They thought because we have an entire loop that meets their turning radius requirements, that there was no issue on that back parcel. Again, it's 2.4 acres, it's a couple home, if you add homes, it would be a couple homes there.
Well, you put maybe four homes on it, right?
No, you could not. It's got 40,000 square foot minimum, and 40,000 square foot minimum, nine tenths of an acre, it's two, it would be two.
Okay.
There's 2.4 acres, and there's also significant topo back there. The developability of the parcel is unknown because there is significant topo, but under the zoning that, as we're leaving now, even as we proposed, but as we're leaving it as residential, single-family now, it only would allow two homes.
Okay. Let me see, you kind of brought up another, you say the front of the parcel is relatively flat, but then it raises to the back?
Yes.
Okay.
About 30-foot difference from the far rear to the, to the front of the western end of the property.
So with the final grading, then?
Yeah, you'll be, I mean, to develop that back parcel, we'll have to be grading of that, but again, we don't have plans for that, we're not engineering the grading on that, we're grading the four and a half acres site, but it's going to have to address the fact that you're going to, you might have to have retaining walls on that property, I don't know, when development does happen on it.
So for this project, it'll be street level?
This project will be street level, yes.
Okay. Okay, I think that answers my question. Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Laduka at this time?
Mr. Laduka, the south property line, I believe, backs up to that, what is it, Rockwood?
Yes. Yes.
There's no walls anywhere around this project, right? It's all just landscaping?
No, we will have, we will have an adjacent wall.
Oh, there is a wall?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a wall with a fence up there on, next to those homes.
Okay. I'm not understanding that from this picture.
Yeah, it's not just open. Yeah, and I'm sorry, from the illustrations there, it's not, it's, all it looks like is, all there is is trees and it's an open field, and you get to walk back and forth and have your own way. It's not that.
So that's going to be a wall?
Yes.
Around there? Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Is that it, Fred?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Laduka. Anyone in the audience wishes to address the commission on this item at the present time, come forward? We have a sign, do we have a sign sheet? We do, just for future reference and that we have your name spelled correctly, if nothing else.
Three minutes.
Yeah, and we'd like to restrict comments to three minutes if it's possible, unless there's a spokesperson for the group, if there is a group here. I don't know, how many people want to speak here on this item? Oh, okay. Is there, go ahead, go ahead, start, and we'll see what happens.
My name's Jane Nagri, and I'm here today, a member of the Granite Bay Community Association. The Ovation Senior Living Center property is currently zoned for about six homes. It is residential, single-family zoning, and residential care homes of more than six units are not allowed on that zoning. This project is asking for a rezone from RS to RA so it will be, appear to be consistent with the Granite Bay community plan. The impacts on fire service, water, sewer, and traffic far exceed six residential units. The RA zoning never put a limit on the number of units allowed. The RA zoning, I'm sure, never envisioned this size, present-day care homes. The definition of the residential agriculture zoning needs to be revised. If RA zoning, RS zoning, excuse me, does not allow any more than six homes, it's a logical step to see that 114 units would not be allowed in RA zoning. The Granite Bay MAC did not agree with this end-around move and voted a unanimous no on this project. This is a loophole that needs to be closed before these facilities are considered. We have an increased number of large care homes coming to Granite Bay. We know why now. Upon reviewing Roseville's zoning ordinance for community care facilities, we found that more than 12 people are considered a commercial facility. more than 12 people are considered a commercial facility and are only allowed in multifamily, residential mixed use, and commercial zone districts. This project, and some that have already been approved, would never have been allowed in Roseville's single-family zone district. The zoning text needs to be reevaluated and updated to deal with this new onslaught of apartment-sized senior housing centers. Developers are taking advantage of this. In Granite Bay, we have over 2,000 acres that are zoned RA and over 3,000 that are zoned RR. This residential property is less expensive than commercial. There's another giant, three-story, 165 residents that's coming in to also ask for a rezone kitty-corner to this development. We would ask that this type of facility not be considered until the zoning code in Placer County can be updated. We would ask that you not vote on this project today until the zoning loophole is closed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Madeline Kalani and I, I live in Granite Bay and have lived here for forever, over 40 years.
Okay.
And I've noticed, there has been a lot of growth and we've had, as she mentioned, Jane mentioned, there's going to be one kitty-corner to this presentation also of a living facility. And they have Escatton and also there's one on the corner of Barton and Douglas and there's also one across from the library that's being planned. And, and finally, there was some research done and they found out, yes, that's true, that if it's in Roseville, it has to be on commercial property and here, not. They can come in the red egg and buy the property for less. I don't know how many of these we need. I don't know, I may need one down the road. I don't know, I'm getting old also. I'm questioning the fact it doesn't have to be a second exit. I served on the fire board and I'm looking at this and I'm wondering, you have 100-plus, 122 people, some of them need, I think, maybe more assistance than others if you have memory issues. Maybe, I don't know why they didn't have the back area to be an exit, I'm not sure why that. But anyways, I think there are these questions about that and there's questions about the zoning and I think Granite Bay is being taken advantage of as far as land use and we'd appreciate your consideration in this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jeff Keith, 23-year resident of Granite Bay residing less than 1,000 feet from the subject property. First and foremost, the Granite Bay MAC voted unanimously 6 to 0 to deny recommendation of this application, expressing that the project is too large for the site and the density is not consistent with the density of the neighbors. Please listen to the community's local representative body and deny recommendation of this project. As the MAC discovered, to the north, south, east, and west of the subject property, there are all single-family residences, not multifamily residences as proposed by the applicant. The applicant wants to drop a 108,000 square foot, two-story residence with 114 bedrooms on a currently single-zoned, single-family residential parcel and have you evaluate it just as if it was another house providing home health care services. Well, I have a six-bedroom residential care home directly over my back fence and it looks like every other house in my neighborhood, not like an apartment building. And they are the quietest neighbors I've ever had in that house. If the applicant can show me another 108,000 square foot house in Granite Bay, I will withdraw my objection to the, to the project. The application wants you, applicant wants you to believe it's residential because it's craftsman-style design and ignore the fact that it's a fully commercial enterprise requiring licensing by the state and employing 85 people over three shifts, 24/7 each day. The applicant's own project description attached to the initial application states that it seeks a conditional use permit for a medical services hospital and extended care facility. But the planning memo on page four of Mr. Rosasco's report describes the project as a provider of non-medical care requiring only a minor use permit. There's a mismatch there. The memo also appines on the same page that the zoning change would be a, quote, "marginal change of existing, quote, of existing zoning," unquote. Marginal in the sense of allowing a single 108,000 square foot building versus possibly a single-family residences, that's not marginal in my view. Describing this project as residential care, residential care home does not even square with the industry definition, which says that care residences typically are located in traditional homes and neighborhoods. It is uncommon to offer services of more than 10 seniors to create personal-style home living, unquote. 144 units is not home, is not home style living. The initial study and checklist also ignores the following substantial significant efforts, effects on the environment and should be, it should be considered for a full EIR. One, the project will physically divide an established community of single-family residences. Two, it results in a substantial alteration to the present or planned use of the area. Three, it will result in a permanent increase in ambient noise above levels existing without the project. Four, it reduces substantial benefit, a substantial population growth in residents and employees by bringing in a new commercial business. My conclusion, the Ovation project does not fit in any way with the surrounding single-family residential properties with at least 90 truly small home residences. Okay. Please deny this, this application. Thank you.
You guys get handouts. You give them to our, you have a copy for her, too?
Yes.
Oh, okay, oh, so you're handing them out.
It's only one of us.
He's handing them out for you, huh? Thank you.
To let you know, my name is Tammy Jackson and I did write a letter and I think it's kind of obvious that you have read this letter and are addressing some of the concerns. I will try to go through mine very quickly since you've already addressed some of the concerns. I'm Tammy Jackson. My husband Chris and I have lived in a property 4041 Daggett Drive directly behind the parcel for 17 years. The first issue, the issues, set of issues that we wanted to be able to bring up to you are issues that we had with Mr. Rosasco's report. He covered one when he said that this parcel does directly back up to the East Ridge neighborhood. He, in his report, had said there's a vacant lot between the two and that is not correct. This will affect, directly affect, all of the East Ridge neighbors. Number two, he says in his report on page four, that the current zoning and the proposed zoning are virtually similar and that if the project doesn't go through, like Creekside Holdings prior project for the church, if it didn't go through, then there wouldn't be a negative impact to us with the new zoning. And that is not true. On the first page of this handout we just gave you, it lists 25 additional allowable land uses that would be allowed under the new zoning that would not be allowed under the current zoning. And that includes things like mining surface and subsurface, electric generating plants, recycling, temporary dwelling, kennels and animal boarding, medical services, a hospital and extended care, and my personal favorite, the heliport. So, I'm confused when they had said in California, that you're not allowed to be able to link rezoning to a specific development. I was given that information and requested that information in our letter by a lawyer and former Granite Bay MAC advisor, so I will go and look into that again. I was not aware that you're not allowed to do that. I'd like somebody actually to just make sure that that is the case because obviously, if you decide to go through with this, the ideal situation would be to link it to the specific plans. And issue number three is, with Mr. Rosasco's report, is that he says it's in, it meets and is consistent with the goals and policies of the Granite Bay Community Plan. I'd just like to point out that just because the architecture meets with those plans, it doesn't meet with the designation. He actually mentions in his report on page three, he has a chart and it lists the Granite Bay Community Plan's designation for this site is, quote, "rural, low-density residential, .9 to 2.3 acres." So, it's not consistent with the Granite Bay Plan, Community Plan. I do understand that there are times when you have to, for the greater community good, you have to make decisions to rezone, but let's be honest about what is happening here, that, you know, we're doing it for, not meeting the Granite Bay Plan, we're doing it because of the greater community good. Did you want me to continue? My husband can continue with the rest of the issues or I could quickly go through. The three, the next three are super important to us and you have addressed some of them. Our biggest concern is that they're not telling us why they're subdividing the land. They are not claiming what's going to happen on the back 2.4 parcel. There is a rumor that there's a phase two, you know, not having specific plans mentioned for this, they, there's been rumors that there's a second phase plan to create a campus and that there will be a similar doubling capacity, a similar building on that back parcel, which would need to be about three stories to be able to meet that bed capacity. So, we are very happy to be able to hear you publicly say that they have no development plans. In fact, they'd like to sell it to somebody who wants to build two houses back there. We're happy that's on the public record that that is the case. You can kick me off anytime if you want to. My husband's happy to do the other.
Okay, thank you. Just to address one point you made there, the last point was that the back parcel is, zoning will stay the same.
I know, I know, and we appreciate that. We appreciate the fact that it's.
No, I'm just saying that, so the two-story, three-story, or it'd all have to come back through the same process, so.
Which we totally appreciate, which was not part of the plan. Because our concern was the fact that, you know, the process of how they were requesting, they wanted it all to be rezoned, then they wanted to, and.
And that came up, that come up in former discussions, too. Thank you.
Excellent, yeah, thank you so much. So, Chris, I'll have you get up and you can start on that. Sign our names.
Chris Jackson, I live with this lady.
Well, I hope so.
Yeah, so I think we've covered, and a lot of it, I'll try and get to the summaries just quickly, but do appreciate also letting us know about the garbage and food delivery. That was not clear initially and there was some concern about that, so appreciate that, that disclosure. Questions about the main parking lot? Interested to know why it was decided to go to the back rather than the front, since that's basically where all the traffic will be. So, that's just something we wanted to bring up as a possible mitigation strategy. Have some questions about the, we had not heard previously about the wall. Also, did not have information about how the landscape screening is going to mitigate because obviously we're in a drought situation. We're not going to have large trees anytime soon and it's going to be very expensive to put that in place quickly. So, that's something that we would like to get a little more information about what sort of guarantees about that buffering will be there because it'd be very, obviously the first thing they would cut back on would not be the residents' water, but would be the use on the landscaping and the buffer that was going to go in. Also, want to just sort of point out that there may be something about this project that is compliant but is misleading. There is that percentage of open space that's supposed to be, supposed to remain on any such project. It's a very clever design where a lot of the open space is actually in the center of the building, but fact of the matter is, there's no difference between that and having a roof over that open space. And if you look at it, there's, it's basically using the entire property, far beyond the 20-something percent that's been stated here. Lastly, yeah, I think I'll just go through the summary points. We've gone over the significant differences between the allowable land use. Again, thank you for responding to that, that's, that helps a lot. It helps to have the transparency around some of the plans for this back lot. That is, that is also something we appreciate having discussed today. I think we've gone over the rezoning, we've gone over the back 2.4 acre. We would like to be a little more engaged as a community, certainly the East Ridge. I know that our, I'm out of time. I know there's been not a whole lot of direct engagement with the community that will be backing up to this facility, so we'd like to foster that if we can. And just also point out again that, that Granite Bay MAC did resoundingly make a comment on this and was kind of summarily disregarded, so we'd like to, again, just make that point that they were speaking for the members of Granite Bay and think that that should be a little bit more seriously taken than, than it was.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
No question, go ahead.
Hey, sir. Can I ask a question?
I'm sorry, I didn't let, got you away in there. Okay, come here, sir.
Want to ask you a question?
Want to ask you a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is, is your parcel adjacent to this?
Directly adjacent, yes.
On the south?
We are to the east.
East.
So, yeah, so we're directly to the east, the part that would be basically buffered by this 2.4 acre lot that they're planning to create.
So, you're east of the 2.4 acre parcel then?
Yes, yeah, we'll look right over our backyard into this project.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Nancy Barcell. I live at 521 Daggett Court and I am directly behind the property. Our fence would have butted that 2.4 parcel. We would love if there were single-family homes there. I'm a little bit confused about if they're not developing it for their memory care extension and there are two houses back there. I don't know who would buy two houses behind a memory care zone that's so isolated, there's no other neighbors around, they'd have to walk around. So, that, you know, it is new to us. We're glad if there would be two one-story homes there. The developer did say that they wanted to, when he was giving his presentation, he said that for the park development on Douglas, that they had, and I appreciate this, with the adjacent neighbors, had decreased the home elevation to one story instead of two stories with anybody that was around them. And so, that, we would like that also to be an assurance, some mitigation that two homes that would be built could be one story, an acre lot is big enough to put a nice ranch home, so that they're not looking directly into, into our backyard. So, that would be something.
That's not part of the.
I know that's not part of it, but we're wondering if we start, you know, the discussion.
And the elevation, I, I did go to the parcel yesterday, I didn't walk on the parcel by parked out on Sierra, and the elevation goes up pretty drastic toward the back there.
It does.
So, your, your properties along the eastern are quite a bit higher than this property.
They are, and so our second story is where we have all of our bedrooms, the noise that would be bounced off of the Ovation site as well as the parking in the back. So, I wanted to address that. So, I'll jump to that. Okay, if we have 85 employees, times 15 breaks or openings in the car doors, I'm an employer, every 15, you know, you have to have breaks, two 15-minute breaks and a lunch and you come and you go, that's over 1,200 times the cars are opening and closing. Can I get some more because you talked? Sorry. Okay.
That's just orange one.
Okay, sorry. And then, we also would like to, if, I know that Ovation, their policy is that they don't call emergency services all the time. Let's say they go out of business and they sell it to somebody else and their policy is to call the fire department every time somebody falls down. We, you know, how will we, can that be added in? The other thing is that some of the views, this looks great on a piece of paper, but I did bring this to submit. This shows in their picture, in their depiction, this is open land, it's not, it's wetlands and there's very little shrubbery and the lights from this property from Ovation would go directly into Kendall Court Backyards, so that's not accurate. These homes back here, they look like little cottages behind 35-foot trees. There is no way, our house is our two-story, they will look at the roof of this place. Okay? On the other side, the Rockwood subdivision, one-story homes, they'll look right into their backyards, into their homes and the, it's not going to be screened. It is all surrounded by larger lots. Ours are, you know, 11, 12,000, quarter of an acre, so we would like it to be more in line. If it were one story or if it were a bunch of homes that had residents in that had memory issues, it would be great. We'd love it. So, while we're happy about some of the changes and some of the things that have been talked about today, we are concerned that the depiction of this is not accurate. I also worry about the cars in the parking lot with elderly going onto the wetlands trail. You know, is there going to be some sort of division? They said a wall and I can't remember where I read it, but I thought they said two to six-foot walls. Well, I'd like to have more specifics on that. Is there going to be a wall in the back? Is there going to be a wall on north and south sides? So, just some questions about that.
Thank you.
And the homes are not hidden. We're going to get all that noise and being a speech pathologist, noise bounces around like a ping-pong ball, so it'll just bounce off of theirs into our backyard and it'll be impossible to sleep. They're putting in nice, thick glass in the, in their residences. I would love it if they do that for our, our homes so that we could sleep at night because we're going to get the increased noise.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Laduka will address some of your concerns at the end.
Good. Good. Can I turn this in to?
Sure.
You guys can take a look.
Sure.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Hi, I'm Jack Ryan and one of the owners of the seven one-acre lots immediately to the south of the proposed project. And I appeared before this commission on January 9th, 2014, on our tentative map, which was fully in compliance with the existing zoning, was approved by this body. As a builder and developer, I don't believe that zoning and density restrictions should be set in stone, rather it's part of the job of duly constituted local tribunals, such as this one, to take into account changes in population and in business activity with an eye toward balancing the need for growth against the potential burdens on infrastructure services and residential quality of life posed by new development. Accordingly, I have no per se opposition to the concept of increasing density in order to accommodate growth. However, I think a measured and proportionate approach is prudent. I would not be speaking here of the subject parcel, which currently has approximately one to an acre zoning, where instead have two or even three dwelling units per acre. where instead have two or even three dwelling units per acre. However, the proposed 114 units on a 4.5 acre parcel, a density in excess of 25 per acre, is another matter. Since zoning is inherently restrictive, its value to a property owner derives not from its action upon that property itself, but rather from its restriction on neighboring property uses, which is intended to provide some measure of settled expectation to the property owner about the surrounding uses. The problem is that if you allow changes that create this kind of discontinuity, 25 to an acre immediately adjacent to one to an acre after properties are developed and constructed based on the latter zoning, then almost any level of settled expectation is vulnerable to total evisceration. Even unavailability of nearby vacant land no longer matters. When density increases by 25-fold, everything is a potential dare-down. Zoning changes can be okay, but they should be guided by reason, not caprice. I ask the commissioners to please consider whether or not finding 2B under the staff recommendation is correct. Is this land use really, quote, "consistent with uses in the immediate neighborhood surrounding the project site," end quote? And how can this 114-unit residential care facility possibly, quote, "provide a transition between the residential subdivisions on the properties to the west, south, and to the east"? There's no transition here, only a singular incongruity. I would also ask the commissioners to review finding 4D. Is this 25-to-an-acre multifamily project really consistent with the character of the immediate neighborhood, which is all single-family homes? Further, in the mitigated negative declaration, finding X2 includes the statement, "The proposed use of a residential care home is consistent with surrounding residential uses and with uses anticipated under the Granite Bay Community Plan for the site. Therefore, there is no impact." A residential care home might have been anticipated, but that would have been a home that looks like and is sized like an actual home, not a 114-unit institution. Would also like to respond to, Mark's made the points that there is another project, the Escotan project at Douglas and Barton, and he pointed out that that's been approved. I would first like to say that just because something else has been, that doesn't necessarily mean that it was the right thing to have happened at that time. And second, he mentioned that there are $2 million houses nearby. Well, perhaps they would be $2.2 million houses, for example, if that project hadn't been approved. I do think the value of our project will be diminished by this project. Finally, if notwithstanding all of the considerations just cited, and the project is approved, we would like to reiterate our request that a landscape buffer between our prop, almost done. We'd like to reiterate our request that a landscape buffer between our property and the subject property of continuous dense foliage sufficiently high, so the subject project would not be visible from our homes and vice versa. When I made this request at the MAC meeting, Mr. Laduka said that his client would be able to accommodate that request. I'm hoping that's still the case, and moreover, I'm hoping that we're not talking about something that, you know, in 10 years would be that barrier. I mean, I would want it, you know, now. So that's basically, thank you.
Hello? I speak for a living, and I'm nervous, because I've never done anything like this before. So if my voice is shaking, forgive me.
Your name, your name for the record?
I'm sorry, Doug Van Vorn, 5150 Weston Way. I live in East Ridge, which backs up.
Up on the, on the east side.
Yeah. I'm late in the game here, so most of what I was going to say has been said, so I'll be short. Just a couple things. Maybe there's more community engagement to come, but I was disappointed in the lack of it thus far. I mean, I just found out about this development. You may know that Sack County considered a similar development about 1,000 feet further down Sierra. Right when you get into Sack County, they had multiple community meetings. The developer had multiple community meetings that I went to. Didn't turn out very good, but at least there was community engagement and involvement, and I think that would be good if there's still time. I realize what you did, everything was legal, and you notified the people 300 feet away and everything like that. The second comment I would make, and I think it was referred to, is I'm just curious, do you take into account when you mitigate what the applicant says they're going to do? Because if that's the case, then it's, and then it would almost seem like it has to be locked in for every owner of that property afterwards. And it was, someone brought it up, but I think it's a great point. When you talk about how they're going to run their business, they may not be running that business forever. So that at least has to be considered. And my last question is, I don't, I don't know, I don't know, but Ms. Jackson did a great job, I think, when she went and did the work to look at what is the difference in the proposed change in zoning? And I hear today the applicant's going to not, going to withdraw their request to rezone that back parcel. But if indeed there are 27 items that could be built that can't be built under the current zoning, the report that was put out was done very poorly and very misleading, because 27 things that can be built, if that was truly rezoned the way they originally requested it, something's wrong in the process and the report that was given to the public about the, you know, I think it said something like, "It's essentially the same." 27 things, including a heliport, is not essentially the same. And that, that needs to be looked at as to why that was said. And if I'm wrong, or if she's wrong, and it really is essentially the same, I'll withdraw that comment.
Okay, thank you very much. By the way, you did fine. Did you sign in, or did you, if you could sign in, please? Sometime.
Good morning, Larissa Berry. First, I'd like to say that the proposed project is detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, convenience, and general welfare of the persons residing immediately adjacent to the project, as you have heard multiple times this morning. I have actually a question and/or a statement. In the MND, it cites 62% coverage of the property, in which case I believe it is zoned for 35% would require a variance. So as I said, that is a question and a statement. The 100% of the parcel is to be graded, and water quality has not been addressed. Contamination of Linda Creek has not been addressed. Additionally, as you've heard multiple times, this is not a residential care home, which in Roseville is 12, and in Granite Bay is 6. This is a medical campus. The MND does not address and is inadequate in regards to ongoing noise as a result of emergency response vehicles. As planned, 1.9 calls per resident, per year is a total of 232 calls. Quality of life issues have not been addressed for adjacent single-family homes and the neighborhoods along the emergency routes. I'm also concerned that no contact has been made with the following agencies: the California Department of Transportation for Traffic Impacts, the California Integrated Waste Management. The number of toilets from this facility exceeds that, what it's zoned for, by approximately 250%. Impacts on the waste management capability must be investigated. A sore pipeline capacity analysis was not conducted as well. And most critical, an emergency response evacuation plan has not been addressed. This is morally inadequate and irresponsible when dealing with a compromised population. In my discussions with the South Placer Fire Department several months prior to this, there were serious concerns about adequate access to the facility. So based on the potential impacts, missing data, and lack of appropriate agency consideration, this project must be resubmitted to ensure that all impacts have been investigated and mitigated to a less than significant level. Thank you.
Mrs. Berry. You go ahead and start talking here. And you can sign in afterwards then, too. Thank you.
My name is Victor Beckett. Thank you, Mr. Cochi, for giving us a chance to express our concerns. I do live very close, I do live very close to this intersection on Haskell Way, and we have been plagued recently with three very excessive rezoning projects on this intersection with no regard to the traffic impact, especially the cumulative effect. Per my request, I have requested the accident crash data for past rolling 12 months. From the city of Roseville alone, there was six, sorry, eight accidents. That doesn't count the tally from CHP report. It doesn't count collisions under $1,000. Per SEQA guidelines, if it's over five accidents in the same intersection within 1,000 feet, more mitigation measures have to be taken. This is before this three project, the last project parked at Granite Bay was just approved, was revised a couple of days ago. So traffic is getting very dangerous and unsafe. We have kids, and we cannot, the community, I understand the reason, the drive for growth, but this is our lives, and it's endangering us. The second point I want to talk about it is the zoning fallacy of, this is downzoning, apparently taking it down to residential agriculture with not, no single family. That's like a big farms. This is not a big farm. This is common, it seems like common sense and good judgment is lacking here. This is a full-blown commercial facility that does not have an emergency exit, and it's lacking in the planning. Please, slow down in this amount of very rezoning. Give us a chance, at least, if you want us to move out, we can. Just give us a notice. The last point I want to explain, all this rezoning are infringing on the neighbors' rights because, in terms of noise, privacy, and traffic safety. And the last point, I want to talk about that, well, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience bringing up some new points, or? And you can go, you can sign in afterwards, I guess.
Good morning, almost afternoon. My name is B.J. Baker. I represent Waterford 2 at Douglas and Berg. I just want to make two comments quickly. I want to talk about the 14-foot lighting and how it could affect the starlight. I was a few years ago affected by the Corey Pond lighting, and so I'm just thinking in a residential area, what happens when you look up and there's 14-foot lighting all around you? You lose all your stars. So I'm that lady and her starlight. I think it's very important for those people that have moved to our area to continue to receive the starlight. And secondly, I'd like to talk about the staffing versus the emergency vehicle response. I'm from the Oakland Public School System, so I don't do a lot of really great math. But I did discover that if you have 80, 100, 200, 160, oh, here it is, 185 people, and you have 65 employees, that's what he quoted, that means that you have 250 people working there, and I'm figuring out that that's like 20.2 persons per shift, and there's three shifts. So I'm thinking there's like eight people there per shift. 65 people with 200 people at beds? Is something like eight people a shift? How are you going to take care of all those people with just eight people? And I brought that up at Mac, and he goes, "Well, that's all that's required." Well, if, excuse me, you're going to need more than that for me if I end up there. That's it. Thank you very much. Have a great afternoon.
Thank you for candid comments. Oh, one more? Oh, yeah, you didn't sign in, if you could, a little bit later.
I'll sign in. So just Jim Cook, I spoke earlier on this particular issue. A couple of points I'd just like to raise relatively quickly. One is, when you look at the density of senior housing in Granite Bay, it's five times the national average. So why do we need yet another one if we're 500% above what the national average is on this? I think the other issue to consider here is this is not consistent with the Granite Bay Community Plan. It's clear, the MAC, and the sole purpose of the MAC is to make recommendations to you and the Board of Supervisors about what we want in our neighborhood, and they voted against this six to zero. So I hope that registers in terms of what the community thinks about this, and then how you consider it in the context of that community.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Okay. Not seen anyone else jump up. I'll close the public hearing at the present time. I'd like to ask, before the applicant gets up, maybe comments from staff, since some of the things were rebuttals. Oh, go ahead. Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry. Jeffrey?
We've heard lots of comments regarding sewer capacity, water capacity, fire department capacity to provide service to these. If this request passes, that doesn't blanketly guarantee that anybody is going to provide service to this facility, does it? They still have to work out the details with the fire department. They still have to get their autograph on a set of plans. They still have to do that with sewer, with water, and every other provider of services to this facility.
Correct. They still need to get will-served letters. They still need to comply with all the conditions in those will-served letters.
Even if this proceeds, isn't capacity, it doesn't get built.
Correct.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Wayne?
This is for county council. One of the questions that was, or at least suggestions that was brought up, is to tie the zoning change specific to this project, as I guess was done previously on this parcel. Is that something that we could consider so that if, for some reason, this project does not go forward, that it reverts back to what the previous zoning was on the property?
No.
Okay. Ben, I guess the question is, why was that, apparently they're saying that was done before when there was a church proposed there? It looks like from your face that that was not-
I'm not aware of that, but what I can tell you is zoning runs with the land, and when you zone a parcel, it is the zoning that is attached to the land until such time as another request is made.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
No, no.
Staff?
I only have one, one thing.
Comments before we-
One comment that I wanted to make about the coverage. When Mrs. Berry spoke, she talked about 62% coverage, which would exceed the coverage in the zoning ordinance. The 62% coverage that she was referring to is impervious surface for hydrology and water quality. The coverage that's referred to in the zoning ordinance is rooftop structural coverage. So this project has about 27, 28% coverage, and it's allowed 35% of structural coverage. The 62% is for water calculation, not what's referred to in the zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you, George. Okay, now at this time, Mr. Laduka would like to address some of the contradictions or issues that came up.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Let's see, I can go through here. There was a comment made about the initial project description, that it was different than what the zoning is. That was the zoning when we applied last year. That was our understanding of what we were referring to in terms of the use, the actual use permit. After we initially applied last year, staff informed us that was not correct, and so we, that was modified. So that's why it's a minor use permit for family care home, seven or more, is because of clarification from your staff. The, again, hopefully I think we've addressed the issue about the uses that are not similar between the two zones by keeping that zoning on the eastern parcel existing. There was a request regarding, or a comment regarding water usage from landscaping, given the California Green Code and new requirements. You're using drip irrigation. You're not planting large areas of turf anymore. In commercial, you have low-impact, water-efficient landscaping that is required and mandated by state law. You have drip irrigation on shrubs and trees. So actually, a facility here uses a lot less water overall when you compare it to, let's say, very large lots that have a bunch of lawn, simply because you're not using, you have to be, you have to be able to pass code.
Who's the water purveyor there?
San Juan.
San Juan, okay, thank you.
The, there was a request regarding the 20.4 acre parcel to the rear, that anything there be one-story. We would be in agreement with that, if there was a request to have one stories. Even though, as you mentioned, Ms. Chairman, that those properties actually sit a little bit higher to address their concerns than of not having very large homes overlooking them in any way. We would agree to, on that back parcel, that that be one-story. Let's see, there was a comment about folks be wandering around and going onto the trail. That trail is a public trail. It's used to the north of us. It's used by folks in Granite Bay. It's actually owned by the city of Roseville. It's in the city of Roseville open space area. Again, memory care residents aren't wandering around, and typically you have staff out there with people, so you don't have just people roaming around on the trail. There was a comment about the, from Mr. Reinon regarding landscaping plans as that moves forward. We, as we mentioned to him at the MAC meeting, we would reiterate that as we start putting together improvement plans on this project, to sit down and work with him on the plantings back there to be, for the three lots of his that would be adjacent to this, this actual property, has seven lots, but only three are adjacent, we'd be more than happy to work with him to make sure we're properly sizing trees, that they're fast-growing, and that they're planted in a way that provides that green buffer that he is seeking. So we would reiterate that on the record before you today. And actually, I got that project approved for Jack. Mr. Moss just addressed the issue about will-served letters relative to what's needed for water, sewer, fire, PG&E, ecology, everything else relative to that. Again, these kind of documents are circulated to various agencies, including the State Clearing House. You get comments- You get comments, if they have an issue, they comment. Issues on water quality get addressed as improvement plan stage, where you come in with the detailed engineering designs of the project to address state requirements for water quality and the MS4 permits the county holds. Finally, and this is, this is a, a new one for me. This is my 19th project in Granite Bay over the last 27 years, and for all that time, and we have met with the Community Association, so that did take place before an egg deck even went out. But I've always been told, as comments come up and people compare things to projects in Roseville, that, "Well, we're not Roseville, so don't compare, compare us to them." This is the first one that I've ever said, "Well, we need to look at the Roseville City Code and apply that in the unincorporated part of Placer County." That's a new one. 27 years doing this, I guess you don't see everything at some point. But again, with the changes that we proposed today to address the concerns, particularly the concerns that were addressed by Mr. and Mrs. Jackson and their letters, the letters that came in yesterday, we've tried to address, I think, a lot of the concerns that were raised. We would ask, based on those changes that we are proposing, that you recommend to the Board approval of the project as we've, as conditioned by your staff and as we've revised today. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Any question, Mr. Laduka? Okay. Any questions? Go ahead, Wayne.
I was just gonna say, again, I'm sorry I was out for a few minutes, but I, I really appreciate the applicant addressing that 2.4 acres, because I have to say, I was very troubled, obviously, and I felt that it was a justified concern of the neighbors, and thank you for dealing with that. I think that was very important to do that, so, appreciate it. George, could I trouble you to kind of put back up what you're asking for us to do today? Oh, there it is. Sorry.
Yeah, you have to, I'll have to change it a little, a little bit.
Right.
To, to reflect that it'll just be the west...
The west portion.
Yeah, the west 4.5 acres of the project site would be rezoned, and the east 2.5... Uh, hold on a sec, I can't...
2.5.
Thank you. 2.5 would remain the same, or 2.4, I think.
Okay. 2.5?
A question, too. Um, I know the applicant indicated that they would be satisfied with one-story on the back parcel. Is that something that we would condition today, or is that...
It is, it is, it is within your authority. I mean, this project, this, this parcel map is part of the, the project. If you wanted to condition it to one-story, you could do that, although you might want to be more specific than one-story. One-story can be 12 feet with a really high-pitched roof, which is not a one-story ranch, which is, you know, eight-to-10-foot wall, or probably 10-or-11-foot wall, and a flat roof. So, one-story is sort of...
Well, the, the other project, though, that was approved by the Board of Supervisors and that we approved earlier, on those lots that were adjacent to, to other residents, we just said one-story. We didn't say anything about height or anything else on those, did we?
Uh, probably not, but my recommendation to you would be...
Well, I'm just...
A height limit, not necessarily a story limit, because a story limit is very difficult for staff.
Well, we...
Ms. Chairman, the issue was having folks in a second-story looking out on their backyards. That was the issue, or looking into their yards. I have never had a project in subdivision in the county where you said, well, of a home design that you don't have before you, you don't even know what's being proposed there in terms of homes, you're gonna say, right now, we're gonna say it's only 18 feet high or 20 feet high. It's by stories. That's the way every subdivision that has those limitations has always been in Placer County, by stories.
All right. Is there a choice?
Go ahead.
And is that something you were gonna suggest, Rich?
Well, yeah, the applicant indicated that, and that was an issue that came up in the public discussion. And so, if, if the applicant is satisfied with that, and... With the one-story. Yeah, and the public discussion was asking for it, then sure, I would include that. Okay. Any other questions or comment? Okay, no questions, how about comments from staff?
Just to, to wrap, Chairman, to wrap up that discussion on the single story.
Sure, go ahead.
If we were gonna modify the condition, we would, you know, whatever your recommendation is, we'd recommend that you include a change to condition 53, which is regarding the CC&amp;Rs prior to accreditation of the parcel map, and then we would include that single-story limitation with, as part of the CC&amp;Rs. That would be part of your recommendation to the Board, and then we would fine-tune that condition when it goes to the Board.
Okay.
Okay.
So, that would be a, sort of a fifth point to the recommendation.
Well, no, just be changing, changing the condition, that one condition.
Right.
53.
Fifty. 53? Yeah. The one with the CC&amp;Rs in it.
Well, if there's no other comments, I can make a recommenda, I can make a motion and see where it goes.
Well, I just, I'd like to make one comment. I asked Mr. Laduka about who served water back there. I thought it was someone other than the City of Roseville, because I did go and park on, on the, on Sierra College yesterday, and then I drove around and almost got lost. I couldn't get out anymore. The roads were kind of, I guess...
And you were in Roseville, too, weren't you?
And I was in Roseville, and it's not even, you know, it's part of, I guess, it's Granite Bay, but it's part of Roseville up there. But I noticed that the, the grasses are really green up there. So, and San Juan is different than Roseville water, but if you come to Roseville, we have quite a few brown lawns, but I just, but the, but the neighborhood was beautiful up there, a little manicured. I didn't see one lawn that wasn't properly trimmed. I can, I want to compliment the residents up there about how they're keeping their houses. That was, that was nice driving through. But again, I, I tried to figure out what road I'd come in and what road I was trying to get out, back up to, then I turned on Old Auburn, and I actually went the wrong way. I said, "Wait a second, this is not gonna get me back to Sierra College." So, I turned around and came back, but anyway. Motion?
I'll make a motion. Make a motion that the Commission adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program prepared for this project in compliance with CEDRA, adopt an ordinance to rezone Assessor Parcel Number 466-030-050-00 from RS-GAAG-B-40, residential, single-family, combined agriculture, combining building site minimum of 40,000 square feet to RA-B-40. I know we're gonna change this, and I'm trying to decide, is it, is it on the third point, or do we do it here?
We have to, rezone is on the second point, because they're only rezoning the first, the front part.
Maybe we have to approve the split first, and then...
Mr. Chair, I'd recommend we take these one at a time, and these are all recommendations to the Board.
So, vote on them individually?
Yeah, let's go individually.
Okay, then, I, my motion is on the first, the adoption of mitigated negative debt.
And that would be subject to the findings in the staff report?
All right. So, move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison's absent, Mr. Gray's absent, Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Ricucci?
Yes. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, how do you, are we suggesting this be modified? What, how would you propose that we modify that account?
We approve the split first, and we'll go up and do the other one and reference the newly created 4.5-acre parcel to rezone.
Okay, the split would be, are we saying three?
I didn't, I didn't quite hear you, but I would say rezone the western four-and-a-half acre portion of SS Parcel Number 466-030.
So, we're gonna take number three right now, right? Is that what we're saying?
No, number two.
Number two?
Just say the western portion.
Oh, okay. Tell me where to plug that in, the western portion at...
Adopt an ordinance to rezone Assessor's, the western portion of Assessor's parcel.
Okay. Adopt an ordinance to rezone the western, the Assessor's parcel number, the western parcel of 466-030-050-000 from RS-AG to B-40. Do I need to say the 4.5 acres somewhere in there?
I think what your motion is intended to be is recommending an adoption to rezone the west 4.5 portion of Assessor's parcel number 466-030-050 from, and the rest continues.
Okay.
Combining agriculture, combining building site minimum of 40,000 square feet to RA-B-40, residential agriculture, combining building site minimum of 40,000 square feet. Anything else?
And that would be subject to the findings in the staff report.
Subject to the findings.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison's absent, Mr. Gray's absent, Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Ricucci?
Yes.
Okay, does three need to be changed?
No, no, it's the same. That one there is okay.
Does...
County Council.
I'm sorry. Oh, um, this one, the actual recommended, recommended motion would be the same, but it would be subject to the findings in the staff report and the conditions as amended.
Oh, and conditions, that's amended, okay. Approve the tentative parcel map to subdivide the 6.9-acre property into a 4.5-acre parcel and a 2.5-acre parcel, subject to the findings and the changes.
And conditions as amended.
And conditions as amended, sorry.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison's absent, Mr. Gray's absent, Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Ricucci?
Yes.
And this is, should be fine the way it is?
It's fine the way it is. It would be subject to findings and conditions as amended.
Okay. Approve the minor use permit to allow a 108,000-square-foot, two-story residential care unit, obation senior living facility to be constructed and operated on the 4.5-acre western parcel of the project site, subject to the findings and...
Conditions as amended.
And the modified conditions, thank you.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Let me see.
Oh, question? Yeah, I just wanted to clarify for the people that are here that there was a question about if somebody else buys this facility, whether they would be able to change their operating. And I guess my understanding is that the conditional use permit has terms that will require any subsequent owner of this property to follow the same operating procedures that are spelled out in the condition use permit.
That's correct. Any entitlement runs with the land, and all the conditions tied to that would also run with that. Okay, the change of ownership.
Thank you.
Any roll call?
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison, Mr. Gray's absent, Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Ricucci?
Yes. Okay, this item is approved.
Mr. Chair, members of the, I just want to clarify the record that the conditions as amended is to direct staff to amend condition number 53, to add a new subsection G that addresses the restriction to one-story on the remaining 2.5-acre parcel.
That's correct.
And also clarify through the record that these are all recommendations to the Board. There are no appeals. This will go straight up as a recommendation.
Straight up to the Board, okay. Thank you.
Do we make a motion on that one-story, or...
No, no, it's...
No, you already did. You had "as amended." I just wanted to clarify that that is the amendment we were, we were discussing.
Okay.
Just a question, and I don't know how, but doing the math, we've got 4.5 and 2.5?
I can speak to that.
Does not add to 6.9?
No, it does not. And the reason I put 4.5 and 2.5 is because it's plus-minus 6.9. So, it could be a little bit less, it could be a little bit more. I'm not sure what size the parcel is. So, the front parcel may be like 4.48, and the back parcel may be like 2.42. So, it's a plus-minus.
Okay.
But they'll be substantially 4.5.
Here, Jeffrey thought you were using new math to come up with a new answer.
It's a plus-minus kind of world.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're gonna take a short break here before we go into the next item. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, about 10 minutes, we'll be back.
We'll give you our permission.
Well, let.
Where's Nicky? Where?
This zoning text amendment sort of sets a path for that. So, looking at the proposed changes, as I mentioned earlier, the main change is to add the emergency shelter land use to three zone districts with a conditional use permit. And those districts, of course, are listed in this first bullet point. Additionally, there are new requirements for staffing. They add specificity to staffing, a requirement for a neighborhood management plan, as well as a security plan. And these elements are sort of tools that we can use to make the use more compatible with its surrounding uses. And then finally, as I mentioned earlier, the way the zoning ordinance reads today, even though residential multifamily is established as a zone district where a shelter can be developed without a discretionary action if it's under 60 persons, a location standard does apply to that. And that is if that RM district is in proximity to, or if that shelter being proposed in RM is in proximity to a sensitive use, like a residential neighborhood, or an elementary school, or a secondary school, it would be subject to a use permit always. So that language is actually clarified through this update to state that if a shelter is proposed on a parcel, that parcel boundary is where the measurement of 500 feet occurs. It's not the geographic center of the shelter proposed itself. If the parcel is 500 feet from a sensitive use, it would be subject to a use permit. So again, pertains specifically as to residential multifamily zone districts. Here is a look at the land use table. You can see we sort of distinguish between shelters at 60 persons and fewer, or 61 persons and over. But what's shown in black here is how the land use table reads today. And then, of course, what's shown in red is what is being proposed today, the conditional use permit in C3, IN, and IMP. And then noted here, shelters are not allowed in residential, single-family, residential, agricultural, residential, forest, office, and professional, airport, and business park zoning districts.
Is the red meaning that that's the new additions?
That is what's being proposed.
So what I read on there right now, that in C1 and C2, or C2 with the conditional use permit, you can have a shelter?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure I read that right.
So it's shown in black is how our ordinance is written today. The red is the newly proposed.
Could you refresh some of our memories of what RES is?
It's resort.
Resort, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, first I thought it was residence, and after the bottom it says not allowed in residence.
Yeah, RES is resort.
I was ashamed to ask, and you did a good job.
Well, I'm willing to. I'm willing to display my knowledge.
Okay, so I'll, there's a couple of maps I'm going to show you next. And this kind of shows what the impact looks like for a few of our communities. This is the map that was generated for the North Auburn area. So let me orient you here a little bit. Here's Highway 80 on the right. This is Highway 49. Bell Road runs across right here. The star shows the Placer County Government Center and the location of the current temporary shelter. And then, of course, the airport is up here. The red that's the brightest is C3, or heavy commercial. The light purple is industrial park, and the darker purple is industrial land. The red that's sort of shown faded back is where shelters could currently be proposed under the ordinance. Those are C1, C2, CPD, HS, and resort zone districts. And then, very hard to see here, and I apologize, but RM is shown very faintly in yellow. And you can see it here, a little bit down here, there's some up here north of Bell Road. So those are all the RM zone districts in North Auburn. The next map here is the Sunset area, which is an area that has been talked about quite a bit as a potential location for a permanent shelter. And I'll orient you here again, this is Highway 65. If you are familiar with the Sunset Industrial Way is right here, and Cincinnati, I don't see it on there, but Sunset Boulevard runs right here, industrial, right here. There is a county-owned piece of property in this area. It is down by the Santucci Justice Center. And as I mentioned, there's some discussion about a potential shelter in that area. You can see there's a tremendous amount of industrial park, and then some industrial land in the Sunset area. A couple weeks ago, I think there was a presentation to you on some land use changes down there. There were some comments on the potential for a shelter down there. But I just wanted to note that staff is exploring options and strategies to identify if this site could be compatible for an emergency shelter land use.
The area in purple there, right in the middle of the word industrial, is that the real Bravo site? The power?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Yeah, probably is.
So in looking at the provisions to minimize land use conflicts, I think first and foremost, the notion that C3, IN, and IMP land uses are generally separated from residential land uses. And there are uses such as like commercial, office space, retail, and storage that separate them or buffer them from residential uses. Additionally, these second bullet points, I think these are sort of the tools in our ordinance that we can use to minimize land use conflicts. So one is giving some real definition to the staffing requirements. So a certain amount of staff is required to be trained at all times and on-site, supervising and management staff is required to be on-site or on-call, and the ordinance addresses that. And, you know, we brought these into the fold here because in reviewing other ordinances and looking at stakeholder feedback, residents and businesses felt they needed to be assured that shelters were operated properly, there was a good amount of transparency between the neighboring residents' uses, commercial businesses, and so forth, about how this is operating, what kind of safety, what kind of management is happening there. So again, the staffing requirements were an effort to get at that need. A neighborhood management plan and safety planner also proposed. The neighborhood management plan details and describes how the shelter would operate. It makes that transparent to the community, and may include things like times when clients can go through the intake process when they leave. It would go, it would review daily operations, or describe daily operations for the community, describe how and when outdoor space would be used, and identify rules, or outline rules of conduct for clients as they arrive and leave the facility. The security plan aims to make the shelter a safe place for the clients, for the employees there, and to some extent, some of the surrounding land uses. The ordinance, the proposed ordinance, details adequate lighting, potentially security cameras, and any procedures for managing the clients and their activities while they're at the facility. So in looking at the impacts for the government center and potential other sites, as you know, the portion of Placer County Government Center where the temporary shelter is located is Zone C3. So if the proposed zoning text amendment is approved, a conditional use permit would be required in order to keep the shelter in operation. As noted in the map of the industrial area, same in that area, that county-owned site is zoned industrial park, and a conditional use permit would also be required to permit a shelter in that location. Other potential locations?
Do you have a question? You know, I think I might know the answer to this, but at any rate, the county is currently working on a plan for the government site out here.
A master plan?
Huh? A master?
A master plan, correct.
And I guess currently where the shelter is located is, would be C3, as I understand it. But if the master plan is in process, and, you know, I guess when the master plan is finally done, it may not be C3 anymore. And so, you know, it's kind of like who comes first, the chicken or the egg? Or would this really probably not be real until the master plan is done? I mean, what you're talking about here in terms of a conditional use permit?
Right, yeah. So, and I'll, Ken Graham answered this question at the North Auburn MAC on Tuesday night. And at this time, he had, he said that the master plan, while it has accommodations for community services and certain social services, a specific shelter site is not outlined in the master plan. That's all that I know about that right now. But we are working with his staff to, you know, make sure that those processes follow one another.
Both, I mean, they're, what'd you say, and they're running at the same pace?
Hey, I can jump in. I mean, two separate, completely separate processes going on. So this, so obviously, the zoning text amendment is moving ahead, I believe, faster than the, you know, master plan for the government center. So that will tag along. So any decision made today is, you know, based on what exists today.
Okay, so then, today it's Zone C3, apparently.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
And so if there's a decision to look at this under the zoning text, provided that it passes the supervisors, we've got to recognize that, then that would still be a viable option with a CUP, a use permit.
Yeah, and I think I would probably go one step further. You know, the government center plan, that's something that will, you know, be something that will go before our board at a minimum. So, you know, if this does get approved and go into effect, that would be something that the board would have to consider, what those changes are with the master plan.
Okay, so they'll have to deal with the chicken and the egg, won't they? Okay, thank you.
I think my last note on this slide is that other potential locations in C3, and IN, and IMP have been identified for, through stakeholder evaluation. So in this sense, the zoning text amendment does provide more options for locations where a shelter could be developed. I want to make a note before I read off staff's recommendation, public outreach. So as was noted in your staff report, we attended MAC meetings throughout the county for those who had heavy commercial, industrial, and industrial park land uses in their MAC boundaries. We were not able to attend the North Auburn MAC meeting when we originally scheduled it on, or were originally scheduled on the agenda because it was canceled. So we did attend at the October 11th meeting this past Tuesday. And the meeting was attended by more than 100 community members, many of them voicing their concern over the potential for the shelter on the Placer County Government Site to be located beyond its temporary term, which, of course, would be allowed with a conditional use permit if the ZTA is approved. After extensive public comment, the MAC approved a motion to recommend that the Planning Commission approve the zoning text amendment to expand the zone districts to industrial and industrial park, however exclude heavy commercial. And they also made a change to some proposed language in the final section of, the final sentence of Sections C4 and E, which pertained to the neighborhood management plan and the security plan. They wanted those details to require, to be required to be included in that. I think the way it reads now is that a security plan, neighborhood management plan, may include certain elements. They would like that to read shall include. So in conclusion, there's definitely a lot of information before you today, and I'm happy to answer some questions. But staff's recommendation is to recommend that the Planning Commission take the following action, and to find the negative declaration prepared for this zoning text amendment as adequate in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, and to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that the proposed zoning text amendments related to emergency shelters is consistent with the Placer County General Plan and implements general plan policies F9, F1, and F12.
Question if I could?
Okay, sure. And the questions of Nikki now?
Nikki, we're dealing with the, with potential locations for these, and we're putting restrictions on the actual locations themselves to minimize problems there. But it's quite obvious that this spills way beyond the boundaries of the facility itself. 500 feet is no stopping port for these folks. I mean, we got guards at Bel Air Shopping Center inside when you're checking out your groceries. And until we figure out what to do with that kind of issue, where we put them, you know, is kind of, you can create conditions for the facility itself. But unless they're incarcerated in there, these problems are going to spill out the door as soon as it's daylight, and we're going to be back to square one, where we are now with that everybody's upset with them. Are we looking at a solution to this in conjunction with this, or are we just kicking the can down the road a bit?
You know, as it pertains to the text amendment, I think, you know, from a planning perspective, we're looking at the land use tools that we can apply for a specific project. Certainly, a lot of coordination with Health and Human Services, the Sheriff's Office, and so forth, has been done in order to figure out a lot of the problems that you speak of. And, you know, unfortunately, and fortunately, we have our sheriff's, the sheriff's office, that it falls on their shoulders to resolve some of those issues. But, you know, what I can say is that that coordination is certainly being talked about within departments, certainly working with Sheriff's Office is a big piece of this.
Nikki, the last time you made the presentation to us, I expressed my concern about the distance that this said, 500 feet to a school potentially. And I said that I did not believe that that was a compatible use that close to a school. And I've noticed that the MAC's responses have been the same. They've expressed concern about the location of these near a school. And additionally, I am concerned about how close they are to residential areas. And I really think that we need to specify a greater distance between residential and schools for where these facilities are. Now, I know that in the requirements, and Jeff was pointing them out again to me, is that these need to be located near services, where there's access to buses, and access to being able to shop and do things like that. So there's a real conflict here, because when you start putting them near services, you're then also getting them close to where other people are doing their daily activities as well. So, like, we were sort of saying, I mean, I don't know how you resolve these, because they just seem like they're in conflict with each other. And I know that, and I'm sure it's like me, and I'm sure everybody in this room is compassionate about the need for these types of facilities, and the plight of these people. But how do you fit them into a community without having major impacts is a concern? So I guess my question is, again, to you, is why can't we restrict a greater distance between residential communities as it relates to, okay, we'll approve, let's say, we approve these additional zoning areas that, where these can be applied? Can't we give a greater distance that has to be considered before these are approved in those two types of areas?
Did you want to take that, Chris?
Are you saying that a shelter should be prohibited within a certain amount of feet, or does it automatically kick it into a use permit process?
I think I'm saying that it should be prohibited, because, and I know that if we say, if we say that it has to go through a specific, you know, let's say, exception sort of situation, then it comes before the commission again, and it gives public input to it. So, you know, I guess that would give an avenue for the public to say, look, I don't want this in the area, and then we have to take up, you know, what the impacts are. So, but I really think that it just, I don't see how it works. I mean, I just don't see how close to a school, close to a residential area, that we ever, it's ever going to make sense.
We've done some mapping based on the old rules, and I think the buffer was 500 feet from residential zone districts and schools, automatically kicked you into a use permit. And the state law requires you to have at least one zone district that you allow up by right. So when we did that analysis, it showed that with that buffer around the residentially zoned land, we only had maybe 10 parcels in the whole county where you could do a shelter without a use permit, which really, it did comply with state law, but didn't. It didn't meet the spirit of the law. So I think if you widen that to 1,000 feet, you're going to remove a whole bunch of zone districts. Because if you look at, say, multifamily or commercial, they're usually back up to residentially zoned land, so you're going to remove all that as an appropriate site, or an allowable site. What we might be left with, and a lot of the communities in the state have designated their by-right zoning as industrial, so around the airport doesn't have a lot of residential zone land around it, so if you do impose that buffer of 1,000 feet, you may have land there that you could do by right. So maybe it's something we could look at, is doing, changing the by right from multifamily or adding by right to industrial or industrial park, and then including, include a 1,000-foot buffer where it's not allowed?
Well, whether it's 500 feet or 1,000 feet, I can't quite throw a rock 1,000 feet, but it's not very far, so I'm not sure it has much of an impact.
It's arbitrary. I mean, 1,000 feet is, you can walk that in a few minutes.
We have policies in place now that prohibit, like, a liquor store being so close to a school, or those kind of things? Is that 500 feet, or is that 12?
I think it's 500 feet. And that's, I think that's how we settled on the original 500-foot buffer, automatically puts you into a use permit, no matter the zone district.
Yeah, and Mr. Nader, I actually looked back through the hearings from 2008 and 2009 and 2011 to look for that discussion on the 500-foot buffer. And, you know, there wasn't a lot of discussion with the commission on it, but there was discussion with the MAC, through the MAC circuit, and that seemed to be tolerated by the community. I believe it was established in looking at other cities' zoning ordinances, and, you know, again, the requirement for the use permit would always allow us to identify, is that really an appropriate, appropriate location?
Well, then, we didn't have a real-life experience. We do now, and we know it doesn't work, so.
Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead. Let me see, in the initial study and checklist, there's discussion under Public Services that there'll be a requirement that the security plan be reviewed by the Sheriff's Office. And on page three, it talks about the, and this seems to be a pretty affirmative requirement. You know, it'd be kind of like the Sheriff's Office looking at the security plan and saying, we'll serve, or something like that. And that's just the way I'm interpreting it. I may be interpreting it wrong. But then, on page three, you know, a few paragraphs down, it says that the Sheriff's Office will get the use permit application, and that'll be enough. To me, I guess what I'm questioning, this seems to be more of a passive review than affirmative review by the Sheriff's Office. And so I'm just asking what the rationale is there for.
Yeah, it's because I spoke with the Sheriff's Office, and in terms of reviewing things like cameras, lighting, and so forth, it really isn't a service they would provide. They said they would do that with sort of consulting firm expertise. Their review is moved into the Neighborhood Relations Plan. It says it's coordination with the Sheriff's Office. So that's sort of where their collaboration and coordination, that's where that's been moved to. And then, through environmental review, I believe we circulate applications to the Sheriff's Office to identify if there are impacts to public services. So that's what that section in the staff report is referring to. It was stricken from the security planning requirement, and that they do have review, as noted in the ordinance, it's in the Neighborhood Relations Plan. And then, it's also through the environmental review process, as we're required to circulate the application, to see what the impacts on public services.
You say the Neighborhood Relations Plan? Yeah, I guess, is that under this Public Services section? Is that what they're referring to here, or is the checklist?
So that's, their review of environmental impacts is separate. It's done to evaluate if there are impacts to public services. So their review in terms of environmental impacts is separate. And then, as noted in the ordinance, the Neighborhood Relations Plan would be done in coordination with the Sheriff's Office.
Okay, so what is this statement under, and it's, what is it, 13, under Public Services? Where they talk about a requirement to, for a security plan? What's that referring to?
Where, so, show me where you are.
It's on page 23.
It says, under notable changes. Is that the section you're?
Well, no, it's back in the initial study and checklist, continued, on page 23.
Okay, right.
Section 13, Public Services.
Yeah, Section 13.
I think the, the discussion on that is simply pertaining to that the sheriff would always have an opportunity to comment on a project, which is why no impact was noted for sheriff's protection. The amendment no longer requires sheriff to review security planning, but it does require them to, the staff reports say that it does, an application would always be circulated to the Sheriff's Office for review of public services during a conditional use permit process review. So if a use permit came in, and we were doing environmental review on the project, that application would be circulated to the Sheriff's Office for review of public services. Separate from that, they play a role in this neighborhood planning, neighborhood relations planning effort.
And so this particular section should be referring to the neighborhood plan? Because that's what is the Sheriff's affirmative review process requirement? I guess what I'm, kind of...
Maybe I can jump in.
If you're saying it's a conditional use permit, you know, I think those things go across the sheriff's desk every day. And, you know, if the checklist requires something specific, it seems like it would go specifically to the sheriff. And I think you're saying that's a neighborhood, the term you used, I don't know.
So if there is a project proposed, and there is a use permit requirement, that project will be subject to environmental review. It will be routed to all the interested agencies, which is, Sheriff's Department is one of those. But even on top of that, you know, they would review the environmental document and have input on that, but they would also have input on the project itself and the conditioning that would go along with that project. I mean, I remember a CUP, you know, those are entitlements that come before your commission, and, you know, on appeal may even go to the, go to the board. So I think it's just, it's just one step in the process where the sheriff may be involved to condition the project.
Okay, I guess I'll have to think about this one. And I guess the reason I'm thinking about this is sometimes if it's a review by staff in another department, it may go across their desk, but they don't pick up on the fact that they're supposed to specifically respond to a particular item. That's something I'll just think about in a while.
Okay, any other question? Go ahead.
No matter what kind of guidelines we give, I mean, are proposed and are approved, will this always, whenever these come up, will there always be an opportunity to notify the public and have public hearings on these for part of the approval process? I mean, is there anything that... I mean, is there anything that just sort of says, okay, if we give them this kind of overlay of what we're looking for, then they automatically can go ahead and move forward on their project without the community's input? I guess that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, so, all of these use permits are, these are all discretionary actions. Minor use permits go before the zoning administrator, conditional use permits before all of you. So yes, that would require us to notify the community about a project of that nature. That is, with exception to where we are required to have one zone district established with, without a discretionary action, and that's under RM for shelters proposed at 60 persons and under.
Well, you can, you notify, but would there be a public hearing like this? Would it come before the planning commission in all cases or not? I guess that's the question I'm asking. Because I think these, I don't care where you put these, they can have an impact. And I think the community needs to have the opportunity to weigh in when these things are going on, that it's not done sort of behind the community's back. So, other than the immediate neighbors.
I'll jump in. I should introduce myself previously. I'm Chris Schmidt with the Planning Services Division. As Nikki pointed out, in the residential multifamily with 60 persons or less, there is no public hearing. We do, they will have to meet the standards that are in the ordinance for the safety and operations plan, but there's not a public hearing, and that is specific, the state passed that law because of the statewide communities were not even recognizing it as a legitimate land use and basically trying to zone out emergency shelters in communities. So they passed SB 2 to require this. And you have to have one zone district without the hearings so that the community really can't, on a zoning basis, say no to a shelter.
So the only people that would be notified are those within 300 feet of the proposed shelter?
There would not even be that because there is no hearing.
Just, and to clarify, that's, we're talking specifically about the residential multifamily district.
Right.
60 or fewer.
I gotta ask the question. We're doing this because the state's telling us we need to, and I gotta know, what if we say no? The state regular, there knows that laws, they don't.
You'll get sued.
You should be aware that with the housing element, failure to comply with the state requirements of housing element could result in a shutdown of all issues of building permits. I mean, that's the ultimate hammer that the state has on us for not complying with the housing element. It has happened to other jurisdictions. Not to say they would, but it's not something that the county takes lightly to fail to comply with the state law with respect to housing.
I think we need to do it a little more often.
Nikki, RM, and that's residential multiple, you're talking like apartments. I mean, where an apartment can be located in RM, right?
An apartment-style housing unit could be located in RM. That's not necessarily what a.
And that's the one that you don't need a conditional use permit for.
That's right. Keeping in mind that there are requirements for a use permit, even in RM, if it is located in that special proximity, but yes.
Proximity. I would think that one of the lesser restrictive ones, like industrial, would be one of the ones that you wouldn't need a permit for, because I would think that the residential, you're going to be near residences, because apartments usually aren't, aren't way out someplace, they're someplace near other residential types. I don't know, that's just a comment. I don't know, it seems like it's reversed.
Okay. Nikki, I guess, I did catch up with you on the neighborhood relations plan.
That's good.
And the, it does require a coordination with the sheriff. So I think that answers my question. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions of staff? If not, we'll open it up. What, what?
I just want to say something before we open it to a public.
Sure, oh, go ahead.
If it's okay.
Sure.
I live probably a five-minute walk from here. So I've been dealing with this, sorry.
I've been dealing with this for the last three or four years since this has been going on. And I just want the commission to appreciate that, you know, I know that the people in the audience have been dealing with this, and I, and this is a real-life experience of what these centers can do, or these shelters can do to any community. I've had to call a sheriff on numerous occasions, and I, and I'm really concerned about, and I brought this up to you the last time, that what's going to happen after March, the end of March? And there's no plan beyond that. When the shelter is shut down, I'm afraid all these people are then going to go back out into the communities, and, and I'm really troubled by what, what's going to happen, because I just think we're, we think we've got issues now, I think they'll be greater when the shelter's closed. I'm not advocating the shelter stay open, but I think there needs to be a plan to deal with it when it's closed. The other thing that I have found, and I know that some people commented on this, and I have a real-life experience on it, is I have rentals that are right around the DeWitt area. And when, in the past, when I've had, before this all came up, whenever I had a vacancy, I had multiple calls. I had people just begging to get into the homes, and I just had a vacancy. And I, and when they found out it was near DeWitt, I had zero interest. And I think that's an implication of what's going on in the community. So I, there's a financial impact to people here. So I just, I just wanted to tell you what, there is an impact, and I'm feeling it.
Open to the public now, who would like to speak? How many people want to speak? And are, and you're all going to say the same thing, or you're going to say different things? I mean.
Well, there is a three minutes.
Yeah, okay, well, just, go ahead.
I'll make it really quick. I'll leave a lot of the comments to the others instead of being repetitive later. First, I want to thank you, Mr. Nader, for your comments. Clearly, you're in sync with what we are all concerned about.
Could we have you state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Betsy Bender. I live in North Auburn. When you talk about the financial impact, it's not just on rentals. You'll hear from others, or we heard on Tuesday, we all live it, it's on selling of our homes as well. And the losses that the people are needing to take are the inability to move based on the fact that they can't get their money back from the house. And we, I don't know, are we doing financials on real estate today? Okay, it, there's really good, very hard data on financials of the real estate in the area that if it isn't shown today, we definitely need to get in your hands. The other thing that I really wanted to get clarified, Nikki, is the map. It was my understanding, and in fact, thank you, it was my understanding, and in fact, at the end of Tuesday's meeting, I don't want to go over it, I want somebody else to really get it to you, thank you. At the end of Tuesday's meeting, that the red was out of zone. Did, did I miss that? I mean, I even clarified at the very end, after, after the MAC meeting, after they all did their A's, that, you know, let me just understand, red is out, lavender and purple are in, and that's not what I'm hearing today?
Currently, red is out.
What, Jeffries?
Red is out, red is, red is C3.
Currently, today, I don't think red is included. Is that correct?
So let me clarify, the way that the North Auburn MAC voted was to exclude the red or C3 from the proposal today, but to include all the industrial and industrial park. But, but staff has brought forward that full proposal, and then the recommendations that all the MACs have made, some of them elected to recommend to keep all the C3 in. So that, all of that feedback is provided to the commission to make their recommendation.
Okay, I'll let somebody else speak, but I still don't understand, and we'll get that clarified, because red was not part of the proposal when they voted on Tuesday night.
Yeah, for your North Auburn MAC.
For, for the North Auburn MAC, which is where we are and what we're talking about.
The proposal, as it stands from staff, has C3 in it, and that's what that map reflects. But the maps, the MAC's vote said to take the red out, but it's still on there because we haven't made any decisions.
Okay, got it.
We have the input, but.
Okay. I didn't hear her say that the recommendation was to take it out. I showed under the recommendation that it was still in there, so.
Well, the staff recommendation is to leave it in, still. The MAC's recommendation is to take it out.
Thank you for your.
Okay, I mean, that's just, that's your input right now.
Well, I was asking for clarification, so you did that, thank you.
That's what I tried to do, yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Tabor, and I'm a resident at 2215 Ranch House Court. Is there a pointer? It's the gray area just south of the red and the star. I've been there 10 years, and I'm speaking on behalf of my neighborhood. We're a tight-knit group, great families, great place to live. I get it, this is a difficult issue. I feel for the people that are out there, that are in need. I also feel for the planners that are trying to implement this, and the decision-makers who are trying to solve this. But the temporary is one thing. The temporary shelter was one thing. This is clearly not the best location for a permanent shelter. There have been altercations and incidents, and county staff members have been assaulted recently. Planning commissioners, I urge you, don't support the ZTA to allow emergency shelters in the C3 zoning, and prohibit the shelter within a minimum of a half-mile to residential and schools. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura Strosser. I live right down the street from her. And I just wanted to request that you not adopt these changes, especially with C3. I know we were just talking about how, what it's going to take for us to be in compliance with the state laws. We are in compliance. The 2011 zoning changes, as I've just read them, says that we're in compliance. We're basically adding additional locations, and the C3 is not the appropriate place. Some of the arguments have already been raised by you about the schools and the residences. As far as I can see, if we're looking at zoning, when you look at the DeWitt Center, that zone broaches right up on the, the residential zone of all of our homes sitting right there. And if you look at the map, no other red area there has any residential homes around it. So clearly, if not all C3's, clearly the one at Atwood shouldn't be there. The other thing I would point out is that back when this was amended in 2011, it was the intent of the Board of Supervisors to exclude C3, or they would have had it on there. If you look at the 2011 zoning, they actually specify C1, C2, they move on to others, and C3's not there. So we're being asked today to include C3 and amend that, but yet we're not amending any other language, really, in the rest of the provision of 1756.295, which is for emergency shelters. If we're going to do this, we need to really look at all of the language, some of which includes that 500-foot demarcation of where this should be. And I think you'll hear a lot today, like we did at the MAC hearing, that, that that is just too short of a distance. For Megan's Law for 290 registrants, it's 2,000. So why are we doing 500? So I'd ask you to consider that. I'd also ask you to consider the other MAC divisions, when they approved this, they don't have the same problems we have, number one. If you look at the MAC approvals, Forest Hill, they didn't approve this at all. And then we also have Horseshoe Penrin, they didn't approve new zones, they just approved some of the other language. And the ones that did approve it are the ones that don't have the residential areas near it or have the same problems. I just ask you to pay attention to the historical data that we have faced for the last few years, and remember that the 2011 revision had an intent to exclude C3, and we need to keep it that way. Thank you very much.
Who would, who would like to be next, come in and sign in? I just, while this person's coming up, I, I just would like to point out, though, if we don't have a shelter someplace in the Auburn area, they're not going to come to Roseland Industrial Area. So it, I don't know, if a temporary shelter, was it conditions better than when there was no shelter at all as far as the?
Yes.
You mean, oh, so, well, okay, so, okay, okay, you answered that. More than one of you answered my question. Okay, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Victoria Connolly. I live in the city of Auburn. I'm here to support keeping any potential zone, including C3, within the expanded zoning text language.
You say you're speaking in favor of keeping it?
I'm in favor of keeping it, because, as they were saying, there are very limited parcels with the buffer zones as they are now, that are available to put shelter. I monitor homeless issues for various reasons. I'm with the Auburn Area Homeless Forum, I monitor them. Right now, Santa Ana has 5,000 people camped around their civic center because they have inadequate shelter. So Seattle is looking at adopting the failed Portland camping along the sidewalk in massive tent cities right now as an answer to their homeless problem. They have 10,000, I believe, that they have to house. You have to have a shelter if you want to clear fields. You cannot, the courts are in the, have moved in the direction of saying you have to have adequate shelter before you're out there roasting people, that it's a violation of their constitutional rights. So there are multiple issues I was going to raise, but I think it's debatable whether, which came first, the shelter problem. We always joke before the shelter that the symbol of North Auburn should be a homeless person walking down 49. So the problem was there, we set out to address it, we created a shelter. Don't throw, I think, I think it's questionable legally to target throwing out a zone such as C3, simply because there's a shelter there. I really question whether that's A, legal, and B, in the spirit of SB 2. So those are my points. Thank you.
Excuse me, I have a question for you.
Oh, question.
You say you monitor the homeless.
Yes, monitor homeless issues.
Yeah, can you, and you mentioned other populations. Do you know what the homeless population is in Auburn?
In where?
Auburn.
Auburn area.
It's, it's a moving target. I know by the count, the rough count was the legal federal count that correlated with the Marbit study two years ago, and in the last year's count, which was the sheltered homeless, roughly, I think the estimate was floating around 200, 500 in the county, actual counted people. You double it for accuracy. I've heard, I've heard people say that Colfax, they had a meeting, they were saying 700 in North Auburn, yet I talked with other law enforcement here, they'd say they were surprised if there would be more than 200 in the North Auburn area. So, you know, who knows? The count's coming up in January, we should have a better handle on the unsheltered at that point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would speak next.
Hi, my name's Lisa Lindgren. I live on Atwood. I know a lot of numbers have been thrown around, but let me tell you where these numbers came from. I recently, on September 25th, went to the Colfax meeting, and in regards to that, there was a deputy there who is part of the POP officers, who threw out some numbers, roughly 500 to 700 homeless in just North Auburn. Whether that's accurate or not, I do not know, but that was stated at the meeting. And if you're curious, you can go on Colfax's Facebook page and see the live stream of what the deputy said. Now, back to, first of all, I wanted to thank you all very much for doing your research. I do live on Atwood. It's, it's really bad. I think that opening the shelter has brought tremendous amount of more here. We have a wet shelter, which I'm not sure how much you guys know, but it, you can come in intoxicated, high on drugs, and that alone has brought so many more here. The other issue that I'm having is now, we do our probation checks there on Thursday. Just this morning, we had somebody run, tasered, and a deputy was punched in the face. Now, I know in the, earlier today, the lady said she wants to see the stars in the sky. Well, the only stars that we're going to be seeing here in North Auburn is a punch in the face by a transient, and I'm tired of it. I don't want to deal with these people, I can't walk in DeWitt, I can't have my kids play outside. I have now put metal bars around my house, so they no longer come to the door asking to use the phone, use the bathroom, you name it. I'm done. We gave Jennifer Montgomery the opportunity to shut down this wet part, and she didn't do it. Now it's so incredibly overwhelming with transient, I want the thing shut down and out of here. You want a solution? Ask Mr. Euler. He had a great one. Put a tent city. Put a tent city down by Santucci, bring in trailers with services they need. Why not? We've already spent billions of dollars on this project, when we were supposed to spend nothing, for POP officers to deal with this issue. That's wonderful, it's great, but we have too many in town, and not enough taking care of it. So, thank you for listening, I appreciate it.
Kathy Lawrence, North Auburn resident. So here's the good news. The good news is that because there has been a conditional permit to allow this homeless shelter to be on a C3 zone, we have had actual experience that we can learn from. And because it is, you can see on the map, and the irony is not lost that you can't see all the, the residential ones are so faded, it's so close to schools and homes, and churches and whatnot. So we have kind of an experience of what this is like to be in a resident, near, and in a residential area. And this is what we've learned. We've learned we can't separate the homeless shelter from the criminal and transient population that it attracts. There's a direct correlation between that homeless shelter opening and the influx, an overwhelming influx, of transients and criminals that have come to our small neighborhood in North Auburn. It is a danger to our community. We have learned, our property values have gone down. We have learned that environmental hazards, such as human filth, needles, fire hazards, have increased dramatically since it opened. We have learned our quality of life has decreased. This is what we can conclude. C3 is not appropriate area for a homeless shelter. That's where it is now. This is what has happened to our community. It has not leveled off. The dangers are increasing. We have learned, we can extrapolate timely, that it's not even close to a res, being appropriate in a residential area. And if you would even listen to a third of the testimonies that were given at Tuesday night's MAC meeting, you will know what I mean. Mr. Nader, you've lived it. The term "shelter" is antiquated. We call shelter anything, from children and families to homeless. That used to work, it doesn't work anymore. Maybe we need to consider redefining what a shelter is, and which shelter is appropriate for which zone, before we make a blanket attempt to change the zoning. And then, so that's what I would say our recommendations are, is maybe this voting to, to change zonings, and what is allowed where, is a bit premature, because we have to still redefine things. We have to redefine what a shelter is appropriate in what zone. We have to define how far away from schools and homes it should be. And as, I just want to add one more thing, and that is, with what we have learned, and what we have lived in North Auburn, I want you to take that into consideration when you read the negative declaration that was made by the checklist that has no impact on all these things that I've told you, we have lived, and it has had impact. So please, read that with some suspect, because in our opinion, it is grossly inaccurate. Thank you very much.
My name is Kathleen Rich. I live 300 feet from the shelter on Atwood Road. My husband and I have lived there for 45 years. We were here before the jail, and certainly before the shelter. I can tell you, everything has changed for the worse. I'm not going to unroll this like I did at the MAC, but you can see 700-plus employ, people put their input into this. They want the shelter gone. Not even, not even wet, the overflow, all that. Stop all of that now. We have heard that there is no impact. This proves everyone wrong. The lack of respect and thought of people who live shop and have businesses, and most of all, the children who are exposed to unacceptable behavior on a daily basis, is appalling. I don't know how this is even approved. The shelter's been a disaster, and it's time to move it. We cannot have it in our small community. All of our people that went to the MAC are here today. We can't take it anymore. We're telling you now, it's a disaster. So it's now time to stop picking and choosing with the Marbit report. They, the Board of Supervisor uses that report, but they don't do the whole thing. He said to them, "Set up the shelter. If you don't do it correctly, you're going to have a disaster on your hands," which is what we have. We've had people accosted. My husband went over to get the mail across the street and was accosted. I went out yesterday morning, I was alone. My husband took our child to high school. There was a transient urinating on the side of my driveway. I was alone, but I went out and told him to go. You know what I have to do? I have to keep a phone on me. I have the non-emergency sheriff telephone number. I already know right up front. I give him my name, where I live, what he looks like, what he's wearing, does he have a weapon? Are you hurt? Those, I spell it out right there, every single day. Thank you, Mr. Nader, you understand everything.
Thank you.
Please shut the shelter down.
Hi, my name is Suzie Tronti. I live in North Auburn. The North Auburn residents have been given very little time to prepare for these meetings regarding zoning. We have experienced misrepresentation and lack of transparency. The reports in favor of the shelter say there is no negative impact, environmentally, aesthetically, cost-wise, or relating to crime. North Auburn residents warned local government, and now our concerns have come to fruition. This shelter has attracted numerous transients to the area due to the wet shelter's opening. We have had to hire extra deputies to deal with the rising crime and nuisances and trash. There's been a rise in EMS and fire calls. Transients are setting fires, just a matter of time before a fire takes out a neighborhood. Local businesses have felt a drop in retail, and have been forced to hire private security, which you've already mentioned. Many employees do not feel safe. The gazebo and lawn are used, are supposed to be used for the pleasure of local residents, yet it's dangerous to be around, and smells of human urine. We need to identify what type of shelter that we need, and we need to find a place for it before even considering zoning. Even the senior living center that was here earlier today, they had a location, they had a proposal, they had a plan, before they asked for a rezoning change. Why does the shelter not come with a set of plans and location? Putting the cart before the horse? Or are you trying to fit a specific shelter to zone without our knowledge? We need to table this rezoning idea until we have better plans for where the shelter will be. Give it more consideration. Give it serious thought to what facility will benefit the sober homeless and surrounding community. Dry, a dry shelter is a must for real victims of homelessness. I've spoken to a few homeless myself who do not feel safe at the shelter because of violence and theft while they're sleeping. People in the shelter are trying, some of them are trying to recover from drugs and alcohol. But the shelter's wet. There, there is addiction going on. And homeless have told me, and homeless that have recited at the shelter, have told me some of the things that have gone on. The overflow side is very, very unsafe. I know for a fact that a charitable organization went to the homeless shelter and tried to go over to this overflow side, and staff forbid this charitable organization to go over to the overflow side because it was too dangerous. These charitable people run an addiction program. They have been in jail themselves. They're recovered, they want to help other people. They weren't allowed to go to the overflow side to speak to these people, because it was too dangerous. Yet every morning, those people get let out in our neighborhood. So I'm asking you to consider, what is the shelter going to be? How will it benefit the homeless, the sober homeless, and, as well as the addicted, who want to recover? And it needs to be dry. That's basically what I'm asking. And it shouldn't be in the C3 area, because that's just affecting too many people. 300 to 500 feet is just a few houses down, really. That's not enough. It needs to be more like 3,000 feet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Caroline Albee, and I live on Cottage off of Atwood, so, very close to here. I'm just going to speak from the heart, because I have nothing prepared. I wasn't planning on speaking. But I moved here five and a half years ago because I had to. I have two children, they're daughters, 10 and 12. And because of custody issues, I needed to move somewhere I could afford. So I moved into a small duplex that I rent. And when I first came upon it, I thought, "How awesome this town is," because it's so small and quaint and beautiful. And the duplex I moved into is in a corner where there's county property. And it was this dream that I had, that we could go and ride our bikes up at DeWitt, and go through the field, ride our bikes through the field and walk the dogs. And we did that, and it was great. But we can't do that anymore, because in the last couple of years, the town has gone so downhill, especially North Auburn where I live, which is right here, that we can't ride our bikes up to DeWitt. My 12-year-old refuses to play in the front yard. She's terrified. I can't tell you how many times I've called the Sheriff's Department, and it's humiliating to live in a neighborhood where you have to call the cops all the time. I'm a single mom. I can't move. I'm trapped. Every day I go home, and I think, "I'm trapped where I'm at. I'm absolutely trapped. I have no other options, I can't move." I don't care about property values, because what I care about, safety and quality of life. And I don't have a quality of life. I work very hard. Half of my income goes to my rent. So I don't have the option to move, like some people do. We, when I moved here, I wasn't aware of the problems that we had with camping next door, but they did put a shutdown to that. But in the last couple of years, every time I go to the grocery store, no matter which one it is, Bel Air, Rayleigh's, whatever neighborhood I'm in, we're constantly approached for money. And I see those same people, those same guys are up in my neighborhood at the DeWitt Center messing around all day long, smoking, doing drugs. They go to this shelter to hang out, and it's just temporary for them. They go live on the streets, and then they go back to the shelter again. It's just a revolving door, is basically what it is. So you, what you asked was, "What's going to happen if we close the shelter?" Well, it's going to take time to clean, clean the neighborhood up, right? The cops are going to have to start arresting people who are drunk in public and causing problems. People are going to realize that they can't take a bus to Auburn anymore and live off the people that live here. People are going to realize they can't steal from our cars, steal from our porches, they can't panhandle in front of our businesses, our grocery stores. People are going to realize that Auburn's not a safe haven anymore for criminals or transients. That's what's going to happen. The word's going to get out, just like it did, about the shelter. Is, it's, people are no longer going to come and be drawn to this town as a transient. I'm sorry, I talked too long, but I just wanted you to have my point of view, so thank you.
You didn't talk...
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Can you speak a little closer to the microphone? Yeah, there you go.
Sorry, my name's Frankie Trazus. I live a few blocks from here, so I've definitely been affected by what's going on on like practically a daily basis. Just a few things. I do disagree with you, though, sir, just in the sense that if there was no shelter here in North Auburn, I do believe that they would gradually just filter away. They wouldn't come here, because the way it's set up now, the way the shelter is set up here now, is very enabling. Auburn has a reputation far and wide in other states. And they, the transients, they know about this place. And they come here, they get the, you know, the trains, trains go through Roseville, so forth. They come up here, they're very familiar with it, so it has a reputation. And I, you were mentioning the one spot up on Sunset. And I thought, you know, one time I had to go to Santucci Center, I guess, that's nearby there. And I was actually, I was riding my bike there, and I was like, "Wow, where am I? It's really far out. It's like way in the boonies." And, and I was thinking, "Okay, I don't, you know, it's not, these people have to, they're going to live somewhere, whether they're across the country, or whether they're in North Auburn or Roseville. But in an area like that, they're not really doing that much harm if they were in, in an area like that Sunset area." Because they're, they're away from people. Now, I know that they need services. There is, there are services at Santucci. There's, you know, a bus can be, go up there or whatever. But I just want to say also, that as far as the scheduling, that with the, the agenda, that it was, it seemed way off today, for some reason. And, you know, it's not like people are really trusting of government these days, so...
You think?
You know, we'd appreciate it, you know, be a little bit more accurate on that. And that's, that's about it, I'll, that's someone else.
Well, thank you. Could you sign in, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Greg Cirillo. I live in North Auburn. I work with the Street Homeless. And first thing I want to say is, we advocates of the homeless agree with the community. We want these people off the street. We have different means of doing it. If you exclude C3 from the amendment, you will close the shelter. And I know that's what some people want. This is a transitional shelter, this is not an emergency shelter. The sites that the staff have identified are for a, an emergency shelter, a permanent shelter. It's not for a transitional shelter. And again, you exclude C3, you close the shelter. Closing the shelter means, people are talking about violent and dangerous people over in overflow. They're there at night, they're not on the streets. You close the shelter, these dangerous and violent people will be out in the streets at night. These people, excuse me, these people who are at the shelter have an opportunity to get services they're not getting anywhere else in Auburn. Case management services. Services that will help them find jobs and housing. And they're, they are successful. There are people who have found housing, stable housing, and jobs. If you take the shelter away, they don't have that possibility. If you think that they're going to leave this area, it's not going to happen. The services from the county are here. People will gravitate here for those services. You have AB 109 and Prop 47 that mandates releasing criminals from jail into Auburn, and they have to attend probation and other law enforcement priorities, because other probation offices have closed. So those elements are here. You mentioned earlier, do we have a plan for, after March 17? This is the plan, to locate a shelter, a permanent shelter, an emergency shelter, while we keep the people in this transitional shelter. And I would recommend that you pass the staff recommendation, and that you recommend to the county that they act quickly to establish a shelter. Nobody wants a permanent emergency shelter here at DeWitt. That's where we're looking at all these sites. We need more options. Excluding C3 precludes that. It reduces the number of options we have. So I rise in support of the text amendment. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Kelly Borg. I don't live right here. I live in North Auburn, up past Dry Creek. So I don't have these people in my yard every day. However, I'm sorry, I'm real emotional about this. I no longer shop at night, because people are there that will hurt you. I never felt that in Auburn. I raised my kids here. We are respectful people, and I'm not saying that homeless people are bad. I'm saying the transients that have been attracted here from the shelter... I'm saying the transients that have been attracted here from the shelter are. The fact that everybody keeps saying all their services are up here, from what I understand, I used to work down in Roseville at the courts, that the probation department's down there. HHS is down there. The Santucci area down there is perfect for them. There's buses already scheduled at the courts. There is, the HHS is right down Sunset. I don't know, it, it just seems weird to me that all we keep seeing is where we can locate it in Auburn. I don't, I don't know why we think that Auburn is the best place. We don't have a lot of jobs up here. We don't have a good transportation system like they do down in the lower area. And I just, I don't understand all of this. I'm sorry. I just want it to be known that we moved to Auburn for a reason and it's gone now. And I don't know how to get it back. But we, we need to, and everybody keeps talking about the kids. The kids are definitely important, but we also have them located right next to the elderly, which scares me to death because at least kids can scream and run. The elderly can't do that. There's, and you're talking about moving them up further up like Bell Road and stuff? There's elderly people all over in those areas. There's, I don't know. You guys have a hard job. I wouldn't want to do it. I just wanted to say that I know there needs to be a shelter. I know that Auburn is not the area for it. And I'm not talking because it's Auburn. I'm talking because we don't have what it needs. We don't have an area. And I'm telling you, the cold is coming. People are going to be everywhere. There's going to be fires everywhere and it's going to be scary. I'm sorry.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Omeker. I actually live Edgewood area. My family has a business just up the road here. We are affected not only by the homeless at our business, but also all the way down at Edgewood. We have multiple issues where we're calling the Sheriff's Department. Our customers don't feel safe. My nieces don't feel safe. Rezoning is the issue at hand and I think that we are getting ahead of ourselves. We need a plan from the shelter. We need to know what site they're looking at. We need to know whether it's going to be a wet shelter. We need details. There is not enough information for us and not enough planning for rezoning to even be on the table right now. I think we need to slow things down. We need to table the rezoning and we need a better plan if we're going to continue to have a homeless shelter in Auburn. We need more plans for safety, more plans for neighborhood cleanup. And we just need to kind of slow down and take a bigger look here before we make any decisions on rezoning. I think rezoning is the least of our problems right now.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Ally Lovell and I also live on Cottage, less than a mile from here. I'm third generation Auburn. I've been around forever. I moved to Roseville, Rockland for a couple of years, came back. As a kid growing up here, yeah, there were a couple of homeless guys. You'd walk through Kmart, you'd see a guy with a dog or one or two panhandling over in that neighborhood. I drove by thirteen on the way here today from Cottage, less than a mile. There's so many things going on that, yes, there are some that's saying the shelter that are, you know, the bad guys kept there all night. Well, there's bad guys living in the field behind us, even though NID put up a ditch or a fence along there to keep them from going in and out of our neighborhoods. We've had fires back there and luckily the fire department's on the other side of that fence. What a lot of people don't get is they're getting some help. There are some people that are going forward and doing their thing. The majority are here because Auburn is a great town. We help our neighbors, we help our friends, we do what we need. And sometimes it's getting a little too free. I think they just need to realize that a shelter would be good in some areas, not by residential. And we keep saying school, by a school. There's three right here, St. Joseph's, Auburn Elve, Rock Creek. There's like eight preschools within a mile. So you can't just throw out a school, you know? You need to consider everything. I have a niece and nephew that are three and seven that live within a mile of here. They've never ridden their bike in their neighborhood. Never. You go to ARD, you go to Ashford or Regional Park, you can't go by yourself. We've taken the kids there to ride their bike and had to come home because there's too many issues. Or you drive by and there's six cop cars out there and they're handcuffing somebody in the middle of the park. And it's like, oh, how do you tell the, the little kids, sorry, you can't actually ride your bike here today? I just wish everybody would realize that it, the shelter is one thing, but the biggest impact is in our neighborhoods. That's where it needs to be. We need a neighborhood plan? We haven't gotten a straight answer as to what that is. Yeah, the cops are doing it for us. They've always had to do it for us. Clearly no one else is. And you ask a question, what is the neighborhood plan? What is the safety plan? And you kind of circumvent around everything? You know, appropriate is a word that's been thrown out all day here. It's not appropriate to make this decision in two days. No freaking way. We can't get straight answers. We don't know what's going on. And as our elected representatives, I don't know how you guys could either. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me? I'm Jill Gottland. I'm the principal of a school in Rockland where, and we actually came about, I think we talked, Sherry might have been in that meeting, about six months ago. We'll be moving over to the Sunset Industrial Park. And so we just wanted to kind of give you fair warning. This just came on our radar that there could be a homeless shelter there. So we will be petitioning for a temporary use permit as well as a rezoning of that area to allow for a school to be in there. And that would certainly be a deterrent for, for our parents in our school, so.
Where, where, what location is this?
Us, Placer Corporate Drive. So Sunset and sixty-five.
Oh.
Yeah.
You're planning a school out there?
Mm-hmm, the old Bridgeway building.
Okay, that's news to me. I mean, I didn't know they had any schools. They're even planning them out there.
Yeah, so.
From Roseville, so that's why, that's surprising.
Yeah, so we've, we're in contact with Roseville City Unified and we're sponsored through Newcastle Elementary and they're aware of it, so.
Okay.
We're, we're growing, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Good afternoon, I'm, I'm Rich Strauser. I live across the street over here off of Atwood Road as well. Been here for, for fourteen years. I emailed a, some notes yesterday and I believe you guys, some of you made some comments that I believe maybe came from some of those notes. So I want to thank you for at least taking the time to read those. I wanted to touch on just a few other things that haven't been said and I, and I hope I can have the time to do this. And I know it was in my notes, but it is difficult for us in this particular community where we're actually directly affected to really be heard or have a voice when we haven't been given much notice. It's been already indicated, Nikki brought it up, the MAC meeting was canceled in September. They rescheduled it for October eleventh. But the time for comments on the negative impact report expired on October third. We hadn't even had a meeting. I wasn't even aware of it. So it wasn't until Tuesday's meeting that I spent yesterday reviewing this negative impact report. And, and I honestly have to say, I feel that it's a true misrepresentation of what the impact of a shelter, in particular, the shelter that we're speaking of. It seems to me, people have talked about the chicken before, or the egg and the chicken and the cart before the horse. This is a bit of a knee-jerk reaction because we opened up the shelter where we're not currently zoned to have it. So we've made some exceptions. Now we're trying to justify doing that by modifying the zoning. I do agree, I think we need to have a better plan. But for, for us to, to take this negative impact and reading through all the notes, they said they had zero comments when it was put out for discussion. So just reviewing it and some of them have been said, I believe there were sixteen things, which I think are ironic. It's an environmental, it's not an environmental impact report, but it references environment, the skyline, the noise, the water, et cetera. So it, it goes beyond the scope of saying, is this structure and these people in this building going to affect things? Well, I, I have to say that I absolutely think that there needs to be some things mentioned. One of them is the land use planning. They said again, no impact, but just for the, the audience's sake, it, the question is, will it cause economic or social changes that would result in significant adverse physical changes to the environment? Well, we've, we've already heard about home values. We've heard about all kinds of things that the answer is a resounding yes. You can't have just no impact. There's got to be some minor change. And, and it goes on. Public services, we've already heard about this. Does it affect things? We, we're going to apparently pass something to a Sheriff's Department for review. There's no requirement for them to look at it. I'm retired Sheriff's Department. I mean, I, I can speak to actually what's going on with crimes and, and just what we heard on Tuesday. Approximately forty percent of all calls for service in North Auburn by Placer County Sheriff's Office in September were transient related. Forty percent. Don't tell me we're not affecting our resources of public safety and their, and their ability to go out and be proactive in their enforcement. Not to mention they're fighting with AB, it's already been said, AB 109 and Prop 47. These guys know they can commit crimes. We have friends here that own restaurants and we, we patronize all of these places. Just two weeks ago, one of the owners of a local restaurant had a knife this big, a butcher knife, pulled on her in there and had to call the law enforcement. CHP came and arrested him. He's still sitting in jail, but this is where he came from. He's not from this area. He's not from Auburn. He was, you know, he was a transplant, if you will. Recreation, the, would the project increase the use of existing neighborhood and regional parks or other recreational facilities such that substantial physical deterioration of the facility would occur be accelerated? It's already been talked about. I mean, nobody can go into their parks. You can't go to the gazebo. They're going to shout you out. I walked by there with my dog and I started walking in and people started yelling profanities. What the F are you doing here? And it's, we're going to have confrontations. Vigilante stuff's going to come out. It's going to be a problem. And, and we, we talked, somebody mentioned this morning about the physical assault again that occurred this morning or the, the physical arrest rather, where they had to tase somebody. Your officers are going to start to get hurt on a more increasing number. And this county is going to have to start paying out on those forty-eight, fifty claims and their workers' comp claims. And it's a liability that we don't need. They're going to end up shooting somebody and there's going to be some lawsuit from somebody that says it was unjustified. And, and we're going to, we're putting ourselves in a position that we don't need to. Really quick, I apologize. I think it's been touched on, the planning, we need, we need significantly more planning as to what this amendment would do. We don't have any, there's, there's nothing, you talk about a neighborhood plan, a safety plan. It's very vague, very general. I mentioned in there, without getting into detail, just looking quickly, Reno, the city of Reno requires VOA, all kinds of requirements that they have to do to have their shelter there. All the way down to their staff requirements, drug and alcohol free, background checks, et cetera. We have none of that here. I also found it really interesting in looking at the map. I'd never seen the, the Sunset area map until today. But there's, there's very few colors on that map that are existing. This one has just a blot of colors everywhere in North Auburn. How come down there, there's so little zoning that's allowed? And maybe I'm ignorant here, but.
It's all industrial, that's why it's industrial park. That's why there's no commercial in C three, C two, C one. That's, that, that.
No, I, I understand, but even if you were to expand, you, you go out to where twelve bridges? You go on the other side of sixty-five? There's a lot of residential out there right now. There's a lot of it. There's a lot of homes that aren't, I mean, that exist in that general area. So I'm just curious as to why, why now we're just trying to consolidate everything here when in fact, there, there's a lot of areas that maybe we can go and, and consider. My last point, if I could, the location standard, and you guys brought it up already, so I don't need to beat up the five hundred feet. I agree with all that, but I did think it was interesting that it specifically says, a use permit shall be required for an emergency shelter proposed on a parcel located within five hundred feet from an elementary school or secondary school or any zone where emergency shelters are not permitted. Well, so they're saying that you, you, they're not prohibiting them. They're saying that a use permit will be required. Why is a five hundred feet from a school all right? Yet if you read the proposal on the changes, they talk about, they can walk a half a mile to a bus stop. One of the proposed text amendments is that they, if this is in an industrial area, they have to be within a half a mile of a bus stop or some transportation. So you're implying that these people can walk a half a mile, but it's okay to be within five hundred feet of a school? Seems a little odd to me.
Well, I think, I, I think I might have been the one asked the question last time. And five hundred is just, is five hundred. I mean, it, it applies to the liquor stores near, and probably in a bunch of other, other locations too. So five hundred isn't, isn't a, a magic number, that's for sure. Is that it, sir?
Yes, and then, and then one other thing, the fact that they do have in there that you can prohibit a shelter. If it's within three hundred feet of any other shelter, we can prohibit them from locating there. Why can't we have the word prohibit when we're talking about schools and things of that nature? And, and set a distance? Not, it doesn't say, I don't know if people are getting this, just because it's within five hundred feet, that means we have to get a use permit. It's not prohibited, it's permitted. And, and we need to be clear that why don't we have a prohibited language for something like that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time today. My name's Brian Norris and I actually followed quite a few issues. Have lived in Placer County, I mean, sixth generation Californian here. But I just had a, something that I had copied and pasted not too recently. Says, my hometown has two missions. This is a guy from San Francisco. City government that offers the region's best free stuff. Not surprisingly, town is developing a growing homeless population and mission district. Businesses unworking, productive taxpaying residents are fleeing. They are being replaced by expanding tax-exempt nonprofits. These organizations claim the growing homeless bubble, which is growing because of the nonprofits distribution of the free bubble up in Rainbow Stew, requires more tax money from the city shrinking tax base. Tax base, they present biased research to support their claims. The industrial homeless complex, no incentive to solve the problem because then why would we be out of business? Two hundred plus million per year to divvy up. The Reverend Cecil Williams is on the front line. Everybody claims to have fed more people. I only say that because I don't have any problem with the homeless. But I do think that this rezoning issue here, if it goes forward the way it is, is in Placer County in ten years, we'll see four, six shelters in areas that will bring this kind of thing. I'm not against homeless, but I think that in order to put a plan like this in front of us, that we need to have direction in regards to like the homeless, the definition of a shelter. So my question also would be to the planning commission is, who is responsible for implementing and overseeing the neighborhood relations plan that they're suggesting in this proposal?
We'll keep, ask some of your questions and then we can ask.
Oh, sorry, sorry. So I just want to segue to also the devalue of homes here in the area. Had a young lady talk about selling her home. Can't sell it. She's selling a hundred and thirty-two dollars per square foot compared to a hundred and sixty-four dollars per square foot out of this buffer zone. My question is also, if this goes through, will it affect that kind of things in other areas and neighborhoods? I also wrote down, I just wanted to say that I worked in the restaurants for many years and I think that this is a knee-jerk reaction. I think that when they asked me to turn the air down for one person out of a hundred, I said, you need to get a coat. I think that also the situation that's happening now is that we really need to look at the definition of a shelter. If we can define a shelter in a, a manner by which we can provide treatment and help people get off the streets and do things, the other things will play out. I'm not against a shelter. I'm against where it's going. I propose that this be tabled right now until like more definitive definition of what the shelter is and the impacts on the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe we'll just have one more person unless, unless you've got something really new.
My name is Jason Smith. I'm a resident in North Auburn. I'm also the director of the Right Hand Auburn Shelter. I just wanted to caution against two things. I think this desire to just get the shelter out of Auburn, as if we can shove them all down in Roseville, I think that would be a mistake. Number one, I'm in constant contact with the Gathering Inn. They're over capacity right now. So the Roseville population is booming. Hospitality house, over capacity. We're over capacity here. Sacramento's dealing with the same problem. So there is no place, there is no vacancy we can just push them into. And if we don't have a shelter bed in Auburn, then we cannot, according to the Department of Justice, enforce anti-camping ordinances in this community. So everybody can go back to the lawn, which is what will happen. And Placer County Sheriff's going to have to make the decision. Do they enforce anti-camping ordinances or, or don't they? And if they do, they're going to run up against the Department of Justice ruling from last August in Bell versus the City of Boise, where they ruled that as a violation of the Eighth Amendment. They ruled it cruel and unusual because they were punishing sleeping. And there's no bed available for them. So you're punishing a human need and they found that a violation of the Eighth Amendment. So we're going to put Placer County Sheriff in the position of having to make that determination. And Placer County then is going to be facing civil rights lawsuits for violating Eighth Amendment. And so the shelter, what the shelter does right now, it allows us to enforce anti-camping ordinances, having a bed available. The second thing though, I think we have to maintain a place for people to go for help if they want help. Now, are people going to sometimes slip in the door who don't want help? Absolutely. And unfortunately, there are going to be ways to work the system, no matter what you create. But I can say this, and these numbers are verified by HHS, our books are open. Anybody's welcome to come look at it. In the month of June, we put eleven people into housing. In the month of July, fifteen. In the month of September, twenty. That's forty-six people into housing in the past three months from the homeless community through our shelter that were on the streets before. They're not sleeping in the shopping centers. They're not sleeping in town. They're not sleeping in the shopping centers, they're not sleeping in town, they're in housing. In the month of June, we had seven people go into drug and alcohol treatment. In the month of July, eleven. And the month of September, seventeen. That's thirty-five people that got help for drug and alcohol that did not connect to help without the shelter. So if we take away the shelter and we can't enforce anti-camping ordinances, what are we left with? And I know we just spent one point two million dollars with the sheriff and they're doing a great job of going out and funneling people in towards services. But the problem is, that's, that's taking the existing population, which is what we're seeing, and it's putting them, it's just concentrating them. And, and they're telling, and they're giving these people an option. You can get a anti-camping ordinance or, or you can go to the shelter. And so when we see this concentration, if we remove the shelter from the equation and we can't enforce anti-camping ordinances, that is what would follow. I one hundred percent support relocating the shelter out of DeWitt. I, I'm behind that. But Auburn needs a shelter, it needs a place for people to go for help. And the shelter right now is helping people.
Thank you, thank you. At least you agreed. Did you, did you say something before?
I did, but I would like to add something to what he's saying.
Okay, quick.
Please, okay. I just wanna say, I appreciate what he's saying, but I've also talked to people on the street and I know there's one gentleman that went through the drug program, is now back on the street and back using again. There's also another couple who was put into housing supposedly, were kicked out for also drug and alcohol use.
That happened.
So I would like to know, you know, if this, if he's gonna put these numbers out, are we following these people and are they truly accurate numbers? Thank you.
That's, I understand, I understand what you're saying. I've been on the, I've been on the St. Vincent de Paul Board in, in Roseville for twenty years and we've had issues over the years, but yeah, we do have people that do come back to different programs that we offer and it is, it is a challenge, no doubt about that. Ma'am, you're the last, you're the last person.
I'm the last one. Can you hear me? I've been here twenty-one years in this area. I do not live in North Auburn. I'm down off of Mount Vernon, but my kids went to St. Joe's, I go to St. Teresa's, this is the area that I'm in. Now they're in high school. It has always been a great place, until about five years ago, and that was two thousand and eleven. And the common denominator is what happened in two thousand and eleven? The shelter. The temporary emergency shelter, five years? Five years later, we're talking about emergency, doing this permit, the zoning. We're beating a dead horse here because we're having more and more, and that's really when the problem started. I used to drop my kids off at school, I had like a four-mile run. I would never do that now. So two thousand and eleven is when we got the shelter and that's when the problem started. And it's getting worse and worse. So yes, we need a homeless shelter, DeWitt, no. And like Mr. Nader said, he's got homes here. I sell real estate. I could not get somebody to buy a house here. I have clients that call me that want to sell their homes. Values are thirty, forty dollars less a square foot here. People don't wanna rent here and what they get for their house, they're completely distraught because they have to go elsewhere, but they're getting so little for their home because of what's happened to home values. And the common denominator is that shelter in two thousand and eleven and it's only gotten worse. So something needs to be done, but I totally agree that we need a plan here, because this is not it. And it's not working and it's not safe. My daughter doesn't even wanna get out of the car at Bel Air unless she sees that cute security guard. You know, I mean, so I think-
That's always an incentive.
And two things, quickly, Grass Valley has two homeless shelters now. Grass Valley used to be newlywed and nearly dead twenty years ago. Now, they brought in those shelters and there is two shelters and it has completely changed that wonderful little town. Placerville did a little tent city. My parents live in Coloma, they work in Placerville. That didn't work out. Mom said the homeless, when they dispersed the shelter, when it didn't work out, they left. If the shelter goes away, before we had the shelter, there were homeless, but nothing like what we see now. So, I mean, I know it's, it's a tough decision and everybody, I'm not gonna reiterate what everybody else has said, but I think that we need to find an area that is less invasive where there's not kids and schools and shopping and if they have to walk a little bit to get a bus to go to the supermarket, too bad, so sad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, I think we've probably exhausted the comments.
Chairman, can we get the, can we get your name for the record, please?
Julie Juliana.
Thank you.
Double J.
I think we've pretty much exhausted the comments because we're starting to hit repeats and so I think I'm gonna close the public comment portion now and go ahead, a question-
I have a question for the staff.
Staff, you go ahead.
Is there a way to set this up without running afoul with the state where we can put language in that triggers the opportunity for public input for these, for these types of facilities? I mean, other than we just say, hey, if it meets the criteria, they can just open it. Because I think it's important that the public has an opportunity to be, to make input, but I'm looking at your face and saying that we're gonna run afoul of the state.
Well, what I wanted to do was clarify what's in front of the commission.
Right.
What's in front of the commission is zoning text amendment to add three additional categories and additional or revised development standards. The zoning category for multifamily residential and permitted as of right is not in front of the, the Planning Commission. So what the Planning Commission has to focus on is the request the staff has brought forward as to whether the recommendation of the board will be yea or nay or something in between regarding the three zoning categories that are before you today.
But can't we sort of make a suggestion that this issue be addressed? I mean, we can go ahead and deal with this, but we can also pass along a recommendation that this needs to be dealt with in a more extensive way? I mean, I, I'm just saying, I just think that it's wrong to not give the public an opportunity to have input. I love Rebecca Tabor's comment in that we should not allow these within a half mile of schools and that we shouldn't do them in C3, but I know that we've got state issues to deal with, so I'm not sure what we can get away with here without, again, running afoul of the state.
Well, let's also clarify that currently our emergency shelter ordinance is consistent and in compliance with state law. We have one zoning category where an emergency shelter is allowed as of right. What's in front of the zoning, what's in front of the Planning Commission today is whether or not to recommend to the board to add three additional zoning categories as well as the other recommended revisions or additions to the development standards for such an emergency shelter. That, that's what's in front of the commission.
Well, if we excluded C3, our recommendation was to exclude C3, we're not running afoul of the state if we do that.
No.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
See, I have a question, kind of in regards to that. And so a lot of people are talking about closing the existing shelter. But at any rate, the way I'm interpreting it is it's got a temporary use permit right now and I guess the zoning is currently C3. But in order for that shelter to become a permanent emergency shelter, it's going to require a conditional use permit, which would be a public hearing and process, or it's gonna be dealt with when the, the DeWitt plan is proclamated or comes together. And so at any rate, I guess what I'm interpreting is, we could say delete C3 today, but that's not necessarily going to cancel the existing shelter's temporary use permit or eliminate the possibility that it could be approved at a future time.
Okay, let me see if I can break this down. First of all, you're absolutely correct. Right now, the shelter in the Government Center is operating pursuant to a temporary conditional use permit. Contrary to what the last speaker said, it was not established in two thousand and eleven. It was established in twenty fourteen. Fifteen, thank you. And was granted a one-year extension. Under the zoning code, a temporary use permit is allowed to have a one-time extension for a maximum period of one year. So that's what the current shelter is operating under in terms of the land use permit. There's also an operating agreement with the current provider. So that's what we have now. The difficulty is that right now, under the zoning code, an emergency shelter would not be permitted in the C3 zone because it's not one of the categories on, on the legend, which is one of the reasons this, this is being brought forward. But you're absolutely right. What's being brought forward right now is the zoning text amendment to open up the additional land use zones, but each one of those requires that anybody who proposes the same would have to apply for a use permit and go through the public hearing process for that. With respect to the, the Government Center, the, the current master plan, it is lagging somewhat and, and you know, sometimes you can look at it as the cart before the horse, but this is not uncommon that we have, for example, in the Sunset Industrial Area, where we're undergoing a community plan amendment, that you have uses or requests come forward that might be a little ahead of the community plan, but they certainly can be looked at on their own merit. And because this is also a county-wide zoning text amendment, which they are by nature, there's no reason that it should lag behind the master plan. If this goes forward in some, some version, that will be of course incorporated into the environmental review that's done for the master plan when that's ready to go forward. I think that was all-
Yeah, I think so. I, I guess, you know, I guess what I was kinda getting at, there's gonna be a public hearing specifically on the conditional use permit for the existing facility if the decision is made to, to make it a permanent emergency shelter.
Right. I mean, if, if someone, county owns the property, if an application is made to request the establishment of an emergency shelter at the current location, it'll be treated as a new application going through the environmental review process and through the hearing process. So yes, that's correct.
Okay. And so if, let's say the commission wants to eliminate C3. I guess that would, if the supervisors support that, that would eliminate the opportunity for the temporary shelter to become a permanent shelter. But if the commission elects to delete C3 totally, then that reduces a lot of the options that would be available for other sites?
Yeah, man, what I would add to that is if the C3 is deleted, if someone wanted to locate a permanent emergency shelter there, there would now be not only a requirement for probably a use permit, but also a rezone. So they would have to actually get a zone district that an emergency shelter is allowed and then the subsequent entitlement, whether that's a use, minor use permit or conditional use permit. So deleting C3 doesn't mean that an application can't be fired to actually filed, not fired, to change-
I thought I heard you right when you said that. I thought my ears were-
To change the, to change the land use to allow such a, such a use. So there's, you know, there's really, anybody can apply for, you know, any permit on any piece of property, so, but it would further restrict it with a, you know-
So they can't come in and ask for a variance? A variance won't-
It would, it would take a, it would take a rezone if, if it wasn't allowed.
You know, what, what doesn't make sense to me is that C3 is more intense than C2, so if somebody were to come in and say, geez, I'd like to downzone my piece of property, we're not, not talking about DeWitt here, not just any property, to C2, god, you almost can't turn that down, you know, in the sense that they're downzoning unless you know the ulterior motive behind it. But that's what doesn't make sense about not having C3 up there to begin with. I'm not saying I'm in favor of it, I'm just saying, when you have those other less intensive uses, C2 and C1, that are already on the list. But see, I don't think it's about C3. I think it's about DeWitt Center and, and also by, by the county's desire to locate a homeless shelter someplace in the county because it also includes that property out north of Roseville, and I live in Roseville, but up in the county property up there, because they've had their, their plans afoot to, to develop something out there. I'm not sure how far along it is, but, so I see this, again, not blaming anybody, but I see this as a, as a plan to, to rezone things or to include them in the Zone Tech Amendment to, to activate some plans that are already in the process, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
So you think we'd be having this discussion even if the homeless shelter wasn't in DeWitt right now? We'd still be including C3?
We wouldn't, would we?
We probably, we probably wouldn't.
Oh, right.
We probably would or wouldn't? No, we wouldn't. I mean, it's, it's about, it's about DeWitt. It's about the homeless shelters located there and all the problems they've had. It has nothing to do with the zoning, to tell you the truth. Other than, than, than the zoning happened to be C3. So, you know, I, I think some of the, well, not some, I think all the comments were valid here today, regardless of what side of the issue they were on, from the standpoint of, are we, are we far enough along on the planning process and, and some of those issues that were brought up? But I do think that the county is really interested in moving that facility out in the industrial area down in Roseville or in Placer County, but north of Roseville along. So that part I think would, I don't, I think we need to go forward with some of this, but maybe not all of it.
Well, there's just too much up on the air right now. For my, I would like to recommend to the, to the commission, I'll certainly put it, I would put it into a motion if we decide to go forward, that they could always come back later and ask for C3 to be addressed. I think we need to drop it for now and come back to it at a later point, once we've got, you know, given the public a lot more time to, to work through this process. So that would be my recommendation, is to approve others, but to post, to recommend to the board that they not take C3 at this point.
You know, I'd like to maybe counter that if I could, before you make the motion. No, yeah, go ahead, we're still in discussion. Okay. But you got three minutes. Three minutes? I'll take the extra three of his minutes. Actually, you're lucky I haven't given you more than a minute, so don't, don't take three minutes. Okay, C3 is a pretty intense commercial. What is C3? What is it?
Heavy, heavy commercial.
This one, one short of industrial. Heavy, heavy commercial? Okay, so- Body shops and everything else in there. Yeah. And so at any rate, I think that's the intent to open this up to more industrial, heavy commercial type uses. If you look at the existing ordinance, it's got Bel Air Shopping Center area and the shopping center where Safeway is, those are already available for a homeless shelter. And so at any rate, by including C3, if you can separate the idea from the existing temporary shelter, it vastly reduces the amount of area that could be considered by somebody to open a new shelter. And so at any rate, I guess I would argue that, you know, understanding a lot of people have strong feelings and I can appreciate it, that what their feelings are with regards to the existing temporary shelter condition, but I think we need to, like Richard was saying, separate ourselves from that and, you know, give the county more areas to look at, given the fact that if somebody comes forward with a proposal, it's gonna take a conditional use permit before they can establish a permanent shelter. And the issues that we're dealing with, with the homeless are really much larger than just the land use issues. I think there's a lot of issues there that have to be addressed by something other than land uses. So at any rate, I, I think if you look at the existing ordinance and the wording that is added with this, I do agree with the North, North Auburn MAC that there's a couple mays that need to be turned into shells. But that additional language that's added here gives extra protections in terms of the land uses. So at any rate, I think the issue of the temporary shelter is something that basically the public and maybe us and the supervisors are gonna have to deal with in the future, but I don't necessarily see that this is part and parcel to that question.
Well, I appreciate your view. I understand where you're coming from, but I just wanna make sure that as of March thirtieth, that we drive a stake in the heart of this shelter and, and DeWitt, because if we go ahead and say C3s are okay for this, then there may be a force to continue this beyond March of seventeen and I just, the implications to the community are just too vast to allow that to continue right now. So that's, that's my-
Any other further discussion?
I just, real quickly, I'd like to commend the North Auburn MAC. When I see a, a letter like this that actually gives us some advice versus just saying, we talked about it and said yes, or we talked about it and said no, it's so much more helpful to actually have some advisory comments as opposed to just a yea- to actually have some advisory comments as opposed to just a yea or a nay. And I appreciate getting this. So if there's anybody.
Don't, 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 don't badmouth Granite Bay now. I agree, this is a nice, nice package.
Tons of letters from, from MACs and most of them is just, we talked about it and said yes or no.
Yeah.
We don't get the advice that we're looking for and, and we did. And I.
And they got a, and they got a lot of data here, too.
I wish we would get more.
Any other discussion? If not, there, is there a motion? The chair will entertain a motion unless staff wants to say something. Staff looks like they want to say something.
Well, I'll say something. I recommend that you take both of the, the actions separately. Let's move first to the neg deck and then we can move to the zoning.
Oh, I see, there's two.
Should we take the first one, but we say we're going to drop C3 or recommend not to include C3 at this point? That doesn't impact the first one, does it?
I'm not sure I understand your question. They're both recommendations to the board.
Okay.
What I'm suggesting is, no matter where we're going with, with the zoning text amendment, I'd like you to take an action as to whether you find, want to recommend to the board that the neg deck be adopted, that it's adequate.
Okay, well, if we say the negative deck is okay, but then we go on to say in the next motion that C3 is not something that we want to pass forward as a recommendation, does that change the language of the, the first motion?
No, unless, what, what you're doing with the neg deck is, is you're determining whether or not you find it adequate in order for the board to take action based on that, that particular environmental document. Your next action is essentially a policy, a policy recommendation as to whether you want to support and move on staff's recommendation or a variation thereof. So you, both, they can go separately, in other words.
One doesn't negate the other, in other words, is what you're saying.
That's correct.
It's the second one has changed, which I think is what's going to happen, but go ahead.
Yeah, and let me clarify that. If you were to ask me right now that, well, I'd like to add zones X, Y, and Z.
Right.
Can I take action on the neg deck? My answer to you would be no.
That, right, but.
But if what I'm hearing that there might be a proposal for less zoning categories, we still have a negative declaration that has analyzed all three of those zoning categories for purposes of your recommendation.
Right, yeah, I, that's, that's true.
Then I don't mind making a motion for the first one.
Why don't you make a motion?
Okay. That we find that the negative declaration prepared for this zoning text amendment is adequate in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act.
And that would be a recommendation to the board and supported by the findings in the staff report.
So move.
Second.
It's moved in second and roll call?
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Severson, Mr. Gray absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Ricucci?
Yes.
Okay, let me take a stab at this and I would ask for your guidance on this. If we were to accept the recommended zoning changes with the exception of C3, what, how would that be stated in that, what we have before us?
Okay, so as I understand it, you're, you're planning to make a recommendation that would be to recommend approval of a zoning text amendment for, to add zone districts, industrial and industrial park.
Right.
Right.
And then we're going to have to talk about whether you wanted any changes or wanted to continue with the recommendations on the zoning, the development standards, whether you wanted to make any changes on that. Maybe what I'm going to suggest is we break this down and let's take the, the motion simply on the zoning district categories and then we can move to a separate motion about any of the development standards. So again, if what I'm understanding you want to do, your motion would be recommending to the board to approve a zoning text amendment to allow emergency shelters in the industrial and industrial park zones.
Right. And where would it be appropriate to add, to change the language that the MAC has recommended from may to shall? Where would we do that?
Right. What I'm suggesting is we take that separately so that we can make sure our record's clear on where the commission is going on E.
There you go.
Can I still move on what you've just said?
Let's make it easy. I don't know. It's up to you.
Your motion is, the chair will try and clarify that you include in the, for the zones, industrial, industrial park in the zones.
Correct.
And is, is that your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Get moved to second and roll call?
Mr. Currie?
Yes.
Mr. Severson and Gray's absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Ricucci?
Yes. Now you wish to change.
Right. Now I'd suggest we go to, and I will refer you to pages, I think it's eight and nine in your staff report where you have the proposed changes to the development standards. And my understanding is that the Auburn MAC recommended for C4 that the second sentence state, these provisions shall include ours. So changing the may to a shall. The second recommendation that that MAC had was on E, second sentence to change the sentence, the plan shall include instead of may.
That's correct.
Now, I don't know if that's what the recommendation would be. I've heard that. Your recommendation can also be to accept a staff as currently proposed or a variation thereof.
I would, I would like to make both those changes, so can I say?
Okay.
Move as you stated.
Okay, what I would suggest your recommendation be, would be that you're recommending to the board that the zoning text amendments regarding the development standards be approved with the changes to C4, last sentence, these provisions may to be changed to shall.
Shall.
And in E, second sentence, the plan shall instead of may. Did I get that right?
That's correct.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Yeah. Thank you, County Council.
That's the motion. That's the motion?
Second.
It's moved in second, roll call?
Mr. Currie?
Yes.
Mr. Severson, Gray's absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Ricucci?
Yes, the motion carries. I believe that, that concludes, I mean, I want to thank.
Well, just a minute. We have, we have more things.
Well, we have, no, we have one more thing.
I'm sorry?
Do we have anything else we need to?
Oh, well, I was going to say for the record, this is a recommendation to the board, therefore there are no appeal rights. It'll go straight to the board. It'll be noticed for a future hearing.
Let me see now, how do we deal with C3?
It's out.
It's out.
It's out.
No, it's not because I voted to include industrial.
Industrial and industrial park.
Yeah.
But C3 was not included in the motion.
Right.
And you voted yes. You wanted to vote no?
No, I wanted to vote yes on those.
And you did.
But I didn't get a vote on C3.
We dropped, we dropped.
We didn't do that.
Excluded. Just changed the language.
Well, you only, you only.
The motion that was in front of the planning commission.
What's that?
That was acted upon was to approve the ZTA for the two zone districts, the industrial and the industrial park.
Park.
It did not include the C3 zone. That was the motion.
Oh, well, I guess I misunderstood because I thought we were going to address C3 separately.
No, that wasn't my intent.
If the, the, the hearing is still open, if the planning commission would like to take a vote to reconsider that motion, you certainly may do so.
Well, I would like to make that motion if I could, that we don't, that we include C3.
Okay, let's, let's break this down.
First of all, what you'd be doing is making a motion to reconsider the motion on the zoning text amendment regarding the zoning land classifications. You'd have to have a second and a majority vote to reconsider that.
The motion's been, the motion's been made to reconsider the zoning item. Is there a second? Okay, the motion lacks for a second.
Okay.
Are we done, staff?
Yes.
Okay, prior to adjourned, I mean, I do want to thank the people. It's a very emotional issue. I know, I live in Roseville, but, and like I said, we have the gathering in there and we have a lot of activities going around town.